Good evening again, everyone. I'd like to invite you to stand as we welcome God's presence in our midst. Prayers will be done by Mr. Michael Rennie and this will be followed by the National Anthem of Grenada. So I would like to also invite you to remain standing as we pay homage to our beautiful island, Grenada.
Good evening all. Shall we invite God's presence? Father in the mighty name of Jesus, we thank you because you're such a wonderful God to us. Today is Wednesday and so far you have taken very good care of us and we thank you in a very special way. We pray oh God that as we are here this evening, to hear, to participate in this town hall, we pray that you would bless the proceeding. And God I do pray Lord that you order decency and Father the best of all of us would come out this evening. So we ask for your protection and we ask oh God that you would use this time Father for knowledge, Father Lord that we would hear what is happening right here in St. Andrew. So Father bless us now we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
And we remain standing for the National Anthem of Grenada. Thank you so much to Deluque Cinema and I also want you to keep in mind and to keep in your hearts and your thoughts and prayers the people of Jamaica who were Cuba and surrounding islands, Haiti Dominican Republic I believe they're battling Hurricane Melissa at this time and I'm sure if you're called upon to give off your service, I know you will not hesitate to do so. Thank you so much, you may have your seats. Members of Cabinet, permanent secretaries and government officials, residents of Big Parish, St. Andrew. Grenadians at home and abroad, ladies and gentlemen. Where there is no vision, the people perish. Proverbs 29:18. This timeless scripture is a constant reminder that progress begins with purpose and purpose is born from vision. A nation without a clear and shared vision is at risk of stagnation, division and missed opportunities. It is clear that when we bring people together, especially leaders and citizens with open hearts, with open minds, it's only then that we begin to shape a future that reflects our highest hopes and our highest values. This evening we gather here at the Deluque Cinema in the spirit of unity and constructive dialogue. So let us be guided by the collective vision set out by our government, a vision that continues to be rooted in equity, sustainability and opportunities for all Grenadians. Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Neela Etienne, Press Secretary in the Office of the Prime Minister and this evening I am pleased to welcome you to this town hall meeting. This evening you have another opportunity to engage with your government, to ask questions, to share your ideas and make suggestions so that all of us can work towards solutions that shape our future. I remind us all that our goal is simple. We listen and we learn from each other so that we can find a common ground to move Grenada forward. These town hall meetings of course present an opportunity to come together to discuss the issues that matter to all Grenadians, both at home and in the diaspora. This evening you will hear from your four Ministers of St. Andrew. Honorable Lennox Andrews, Minister for Economic Development, Planning and Cooperatives, Agriculture and Lands Forestry and the Blue Economy and Marine Affairs. You will also hear from Senator the Honorable Gloria Thomas, Minister for Social and Community Development, Housing and Gender Affairs. Senator the Honorable David Andrew, Minister for Education and Honorable Delma Thomas, Minister for Youth and Sports, Mental Health and Religious Affairs. Later on this evening you will hear from our Prime Minister, the Honorable Deacon Mitchell and we will get an update from the Project Polaris team represented by the project sponsor, Ms. Andrea Saint-Bernard. Following the presentations, we will invite you to the floor to ask your questions, to make comments and of course to make recommendations. To ensure that everyone has a fair opportunity to participate, we kindly ask that each of you limit your contributions to one question or one comment during the question and answer session. This will help us to manage the time effectively and allow as many voices as possible to be heard. We thank you in advance for your cooperation and your understanding. At this time it gives me great pleasure to welcome the Honorable Lennox Andrews to the podium to make his presentation.
A very pleasant good afternoon or good evening. My cabinet colleagues. I however want to single out my three cabinet colleagues from Big Parish, St. Andrew. Sister Gloria Thomas, Brother David and Sister Delma and our other cabinet colleagues, they are all at the front row here, good? Good, so thank you all. People of St. Andrew, I say to you all, thanks for coming. It's nice to see so many of you here present. Before I, I'll give you details of what I want to say to you concerning St. Andrew Southwest. And today I will focus exclusively on St. Andrew Southwest. And I say that because for the past years I've been speaking a lot about what was happening or what's happening in our ministries, my different ministries. And people say to me that you always speak about your ministry but you don't speak about what you're doing in your constituency. And it's the constituency who brought you here. So you must let the country know what's happening in your constituency. So today I speak about my constituency. And before I start, I would want to recognize the team from St. Andrew Southwest who work with me. It's a very large team, some of them are in fact present here. So I want to ask them all to stand. Willan, Mr. Charles, please stand and take a bow. Wait Mr. Rennie, Mr. Rennie, wait there. Mr. Rennie, Mr. Rennie come and join the team man, come and be part of the team. So thank you all very much indeed. So I have prepared a detailed account of what we have done in our constituency since taking office. And I will read them out to you but as I read, you will actually see the truth. So there you will see the pictures of what I am saying. So it's not just words, it is words and the actual that took place on the ground. Okay, you with me? Alright, so our major achievements in St. Andrew Southwest since the NDC came into office. Good, up to October 29, 2025. So let's start first of all with our long-term employment. We provided employment for 107, long-term employment, 107 people. And this includes geriatric caregivers, housing officers, community liaison officers, seed officers, parliamentary office staff, personal assistants, housing brigade workers, bathroom and toilet construction workers, secretaries, clerical workers, propagation station workers, abattoir workers, market cleaners, agriculture clerical workers, fishers extension officers, school gardeners, school cooks, security officers, environmental ones and malaria drain maintenance. Right, so you could see there the different areas where we have provided assistance to our constituents. So in terms of short-term rotational employment, we provided employment for 2,600 people. And that includes people working in concrete works, that is drains and roads, construction workers for the bushes and the beach cleaners that the sagasam with. We had a number of planned constituency office meetings. And in those meetings, we had a total of 121. They came to see me in my office. And in those, in that time you know they represent the issues and I will address them. 1,815 constituents were seen. So that's me there. During these sessions and their concerns were addressed and their concerns included things like housing, medical and other various financials, financial requests. And this doesn't exclude the many other interactions and personal assistance provided to schools of constituents on a daily basis. We had a number of planned walkabouts, spontaneous visits and attendance to different communities activities, right, and those were done throughout all of the villages. We also had home visits, provision of moral and financial support to bereavement families as well as to attend the third night funeral and repasses. Good? Alright, so let's look now at our housing material assistance and house construction through all the respective villages. And most of these were funded by the Ministry of Social Development and Houses. Sister Gloria Thomas. So 149, 149 people received housing material assistance ranging from $3,000 to $8,000 per person. Eighty-four of these also receive assistance from the housing brigade in the construction of their homes. Forty-nine new wooden houses with bathrooms and toilets were constructed for needy individuals and/or families. Twenty-seven one-bedroom and 22 two-bedrooms. Another 104 people also received material assistance in amongst less than $3,000 each. And again, this was funded by the Ministry of Social Development Special Assistance Budget. We had a few projects that were funded by the MIT. Two Build Back Better Homes were constructed for two families who were severely impacted by Hurricane Berel, one at Ladig and one at Granborough. Six, six wooden houses were also constructed for needy families from MIT funds. Five two-bedroom and one three-bedroom. So let's move now to bathroom. I'm going too fast. I'll go back a little bit. Alright, bathroom and toilet material assistance and construction through all the respective villages and again funded by the Ministry of Social Development and Housing. Fifty-five individuals and families receive bathroom and toilet material assistance as well as the actual construction of these facilities either by the brigade or private contractors at an average total cost of $21,000 per bathroom and toilet. And of course that was funded by Wash. Twenty families, twenty families receive indoor bathrooms and toilets under the Wash program. Thirteen in Subies and seven in Butch Grove. And of course we recently had a nice ceremony to commission these. We have another 25 to construct. So let's move on. You're gonna see the slides there as well. Provision of financial assistance, provision of financial assistance from my own personal funds and from the constituency allowance. Direct cash provided to 79 constituents. Direct cash provided to 79 constituents and these were one-off. Some were ongoing for various purposes, for example utility bills. Prescription assistance provided to nine constituents, right, four of which are ongoing. Medical assistance provided to 16 constituents inclusive of conducting minor surgical procedures, obtaining glasses and for diagnostic procedures. Sixteen for surgical procedure, obtaining glasses, diagnostic procedures. Some of that money came from my pocket eh? Groceries, grocery assistance. We provided groceries for a number of individuals and families, alright? We have a supermarket in Granville that helps us with that, okay? When they come to see me I say, you go by the supermarket and tell them give you $500 worth of groceries and when you want end up paying for that. Student support. Eleven constituents receive student support. Graduation fees, tuition fees, short courses payment, monthly support to the family of one overseas student. So let me just say that if you come to me and you tell me you want to do a course, maybe by grade school, I write a cheque and I pay for it for you, alright? And there were quite a number of that. Some want some assistance for TAMCC, for SGU, I give you some money too, good? We have fifteen, nine and six, fifteen young Grenadians presently studying at the School of Agriculture in Guyana. Good? And there is scholarships, there is scholarship. We give these students every semester $3,000. The government of Guyana give them 100 US dollars. That's just to look after themselves. They get three meals per day, they have the place to stay, the material and everything. I went there myself and they were here last August, the first batch were here last August and they are doing very well. They're doing very, very well. I spoke to the principal, he say them students making us proud. So the government of Guyana. They gave us, I asked them for five over a three-year period, they're giving us nine. So I sent six this year, they went last month, good? And we have three more to send sometime before the end of the year, good? And next year again, God's will, we go send nine more, good? But more than that, when I last spoke to the Minister for Agriculture in Guyana, he told me, he'll give me some, when they finish, when they graduate, they can go straight to university and get degree. So agriculture is taken care of. Schools, sporting clubs, community groups and church, we provide sponsorship. We give trophies and refreshments, special events like community celebrations for Christmas, independence, emancipation, Father's Day, Mother's Day etc., we also provided assistance. Funeral assistance, we provide to many, many families. Distribution of food hampers, that is ongoing, whether we know Christmas time, we do a lot of that. Toys at Christmas, we do a lot of that. Back to school, we do a lot of that, yeah? Good. Sess, you recall, you will recall Sess. Everybody know what is Sess, not so? You recall Sess? Yeah, when we were giving out grants of up to $30,000, right? For people to assist them with the business, good? So 36 constituents from Southwest benefited from Sess. Receiving a total of $589,292.31, that is plenty money. Good? And they were involved in, these beneficiaries, they were involved in agricultural production, fishing, cottage industry, small business. I remember a lady receiving eight goats. So them goats are multiplying right now, good? I remember a young man receive, we build a boat for him and we buy the engine for him. So he has a full boat and that's his livelihood, good? Assistance to farmers. A number of farmers were provided with assistance inclusive of planting material, fertilizers, chick feeds and small machinery. I see one from my inside here. My good friend. I see one from my inside that receive assistance, yeah? But you recall that under the Ministry after Berel, the government distributed over $34 million cash to farmers. You recall that? And I want to say there were some farmers who still didn't get. So for those who didn't get, your cheque is being prepared because Cabinet has recently approved another millions of dollars for them, alright? Good. Farmers, fisher folks, a number of fisher folks were provided with assistance inclusive of boat building materials and boat engines. Look at one thing, this man from Subies, they got engine. There are about five of them who got engine already and we have some more to give out. We have some more to give out, good? And big engineer, 75 horsepower, four-stroke. Seventy-five horsepower, four-stroke, big engine, proper thing. Proper thing. Seed beneficiaries, 66. Seed beneficiaries, sixty-six, sixty-six new beneficiaries were added to this seed program. Sixty-six, that is a clap. You find so? Sixty-six. We also helping our people to become economically independent, independent on their own. So we gave some small business assistance as well. And eight constituents received financial assistance to enhance their small business. This is one. This young lady, she makes cake and pastries and so on. And she got her... So thank you Prime Minister for coming. As you can see, they were waiting for you. But I'm just telling them the many good things we have been doing in St Andrews, Southwest. Go for it online. Oh, yes, alright, thank you. So let's continue. So I was saying, this young lady, she receive a set of utensils that will help her in her cooking and her baking. See what I mean? Economic independence, they call that. She making money on she own. Nice. That's really good. Contracts awarded. Six constituents were awarded security contracts. Three constituents were awarded playing field maintenance contracts. Thirty constituents were awarded concrete work contracts. And these contractors are providing short-term employment for at least one hundred persons. And you can see, I'm making sure the work is done. I take time out and I go out and I meet the contractors, I talk to them, alright? I talk to them. Because I remember when I was a student, I read a book by one of the greatest, or the brightest historian of the Caribbean, Walter Rodney from Guyana. And he wrote a book entitled The Groundings With My Brothers. And he said in that book that a government in power must always establish and maintain that grounding with his people, that's so? The grounding with the people. Training, training programs. One after-school training program for children between the ages of nine to eleven years was conducted in Granville. One training program for CPE students was conducted in Ladig. One training program in English and basic French for students between the ages of eight to sixteen was also conducted in Ladig. One costing of project seminar for five prospective contractors were conducted in Subis. Now, this particular training was for our people who want to become contractors. So we taught them, they would train how to fill up the farm, how to apply, good? And we give them some basic training in being a contractor, good? And that was done at our office in, in Subis. Six constituents received short-term training in China in varying fields. Some of them studying different things in, in China. Ten are presently... Ten people are presently attending adult literacy classes at Granby Community Center. I, I myself gave them a class. You see me there? I gave them, I gave them a class in managing your finances. You know, I was training economics, I know about money, how to manage, how to manage your money. So I gave them at that class there, you know what they tell me? Come back. I, I will have the time to go back by them. Ten, ten also would be commencing basic training in cosmetic applications, good? That has already been approved, um, the facilitator should be somewhere inside here, but they asked for this, so we giving them that. Ten would also be receiving training in basic sewing techniques at the Granby Community Center, right? That project is already approved, it's gonna start shortly. Ten would also be trained in baking and icing of cake. That project is also awaiting, awaiting approval, good? Now, we gave out some computers and some laptops. So four desktop computers were donated to the Busch Grove Community Development Organization. Two laptops were donated to the, to the beginners preschool in Granville. And one laptop was donated to an, to an outstanding primary school, to an outstanding primary school student. Our youth program. One youth talk session was held at the Deluc Cinema. Planting of murals was done at the Holy Cross RSC School. That's the one in Munich. I was there with them too. You could, you could turn that page again, it's another picture, eh? Good? Distribution of notebooks to all primary schools in the constituency was done. A reading competition for students between the ages of eight to ten years was also held at the Holy Cross RSC School. And a special community session for youth was held at Union Playing Field, good? Good? So let's move to infrastructure, infrastructure development. And that occurred through the constituency, and includes the following. We constructed some busheds. You see two of them there? Right. One is at Richmond and the other is at Mount Carmel. And they are kept clean. The people in the village clean them for themselves. That is good community vibes. We have to pay the boys to clean them. The people clean them for themselves. And if you go there now, they clean decent. Yeah, we need a lot of that. And let me say this, we are now currently constructing another bushed in Subis that's directly opposite the entrance for Chinese Hill. They asked for that. You, you see it? Yeah, that's happening right now. Grand Lake Lights. Thirty-nine streetlights were installed by Grand Lake through all the villages, right? And some is still ongoing, good? Solar lights. Fifty solar lights were installed through the constituency, including the lighting of Munich and Ladig Playing Field. I remember, just to give you a joke, I remember when you light up or when you lit up Ladig Playing Field, a few people get vexed with me. They get vexed with me. But I won't tell you why. But since then, Ladig Playing Field has become one of the most active playing field in Southwest. It's always busy. And we are going to complete the basketball court and we're gonna set up another playground as well for the children, alright? Improvements to community centers. Five community centers were enhanced, and these are Granby, Hafford Village, Ladig, Union and St James', good? Improvements to playing field, fencing and renovation to the pavilion at the Granville Vacation Gung. Installation of solar lights and the construction of bathroom and toilet facilities at the Munich Playing Field. And I want to repeat this one, installation of solar lights and the construction of bathroom and toilet facilities at the Munich Playing Field, alright? You all remember this one, because somebody went on social media and said, Toz, I ain't doing nothing. But since then, I ain't seen, come back and say Toz doing something. Construction of bathroom and toilets facilities at the Palm Playing Field in Busch Grove, Lower Capital, good? And renovation as well to the pavilion. Laying of a tough cricket pitch at the St James Playing Field, that's happening right now. And we are about to construct as well toilet facilities there. Now the people in St James, said to me, so Mr. Toz, we don't want plenty. We don't ask him for much, you know, all we want is that tough playing field, good? So the playing field, the tough playing field is almost ready. We're waiting for the rain to come down. Waiting for the rain to come down. But Roger, I suppose you know Roger, Roger looks after the, the playing field in, in Progress Park. Roger is the one who is constructing the playing field. So very soon, St James is going to have the, the tough playing field ready for cricket next year, good? And I want to say to them, I want to say to them, I am planning to spend a whole Sunday with them because I'm gonna give them some modern cricket games, alright? For the, for the competition when it starts, good? Alright. So right now, we are constructing a bathroom and toilet at Ford Playing Field, Ford Playing Field. Good? And we have maintenance contracts that was signed for all playing fields, including the small one in Subis, good? We have erected a billboard at Ladig in honor of Malcolm X. I wonder if you have seen this one? You all see this one? Alright. Alright, so let's move on to other construction. Concrete roads, pavements, slipper drains, box drains, curb walls, retaining walls, culverts and footpath through all the villages in the constituency, alright? So forty-five, forty-five concrete roads were constructed, ranging from a hundred and fifty feet to three hundred and fifty feet. And I want to point out the Granby Cemetery Road. Now everybody like that road. But I remember when I was campaigning and I said to the people, I'm going to do over this road. They said to me, what happened to you, Toz? You want to recover that? But now the road is constructed, everybody happy. And there's a little piece left to be done, we go do it, alright? So I mentioned this one, the Busch Grove RSC School Gap. The Busch Grove RSC School Gap, that was paved, the school glade, them children glade. The St Giles Arken School Road, that was done. And there were others done in Munich, Union, Ladig, St James, Busch Grove, Granby, Hafford Village, Ford, Centipede Street. Centipede Street is a nice road. You must come there and watch it. Nice concrete road. And the reason why it's nice is because it leads to one of the best waterfall in St Andrews. Yeah, one of the best waterfall in St Andrews. So next year, we will do another piece again and construct, so we will have full, easy access to go right up to the waterfall, alright? So we working. Things happening. Yeah, things happening, things happening. Five retaining walls were constructed, right, in River Road, Subis and so on. In Mount Carmel, seven box drains were constructed, good? Seven culverts with drains were constructed in Richmond, Munich, Hafford Village, Caruth, Walker. Two curb walls were constructed in Mons St Thomas and Mount Carmel. Thirty slipper drains were constructed ranging from a hundred and fifty feet to nine hundred feet in Munich, Ford, Union, Granby, Richmond, Castan, Pleasant, De Brando, Bellevue, Land, St James, Hafford Village, all over. Five, five footpaths were constructed in Caruth, Union, Cookie Road. One one-step was also constructed in, in Mount Carmel. You want to hear more? Well, I need to give some time for my other colleagues to speak, alright? But as you can see, my friends, things happening, right? Things happening. And when the others come to speak, is more things happening. More things happening. So as you can see, my friends, this administration is an administration that has maintained its link, its grounding with the people. And our aim is to address the needs of our people and do so with alacrity, good? And all what we have done here, I mean, there are more photos for you to see, we'll put this on social media. Put it on social media. Because some people say to me, ah, Mr. Toz, you're doing thing, you know, but we haven't seen what you're doing. So it's gonna be on social media? So spread the good news? Tell them? So when they meet you and they say to you, nothing happening? Tell them things happening, things happening. So, so as I leave, as I leave, I want us to leave this place with two words. Things happening, things happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister Andrews. And someone on the live, just a commenter on the live broadcast, no roasting corn in the bush shed. Okay, it's a comment on the live, alright? Thank you so much, Minister. And now we invite Senator the Honorable Gloria Thomas, Minister for Social and Community Development, Housing and Gender Affairs, to make her presentation.
Thank you, Miss Athian. Honorable Prime Minister, Nika Mitchell, fellow ministers of government, Dr. Thesa Sincere, Comminence Secretaries present, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, good evening all. It is truly a privilege to join you here this evening at this national event to highlight some of the achievements of the Ministry of Social and Community Development, Housing and Gender Affairs for 2025. I will not go back as Brother Lennox from the time we come into office. Because if I decide to do that, we live in here three o'clock in the morning. So I will be focusing on the last six months or so. As we promise, we will come back to you to report. And this is what we are doing here this evening, because things are happening. As you may know, the Ministry of Social and Community Development, is tasked with, the Ministry of Social and Community Development, Housing and Gender Affairs, is tasked with the responsibility to ensure that the vulnerable groups experience improved quality of life from the provision of supportive social programs designed to alleviate adverse life experiences. We always say in the ministry, we deal with people from the cradle to the grave. The ministry is the main provider of social protection in Grenada and is responsible for a large number of social services that target vulnerable groups. And one of the more popular programs I want to speak about, it, anybody could guess? Seed. You can't speak social development if you don't speak seed. Anyway, it is what it is. The seed program continues to play a vital role in providing social assistance and support to vulnerable households across the country. To date, a total of five thousand and ninety-nine households, representing over seven thousand active beneficiaries, are benefiting from the program through regular financial support aimed at improving living condition. And according to Brother Lennox, that, that is... And according to Brother Lennox, that is a round of applause. The program remains committed to ensuring transparency and efficiency in the delivery of benefits through continuous monitoring and collaboration with key stakeholders. And I know many of you, many persons come because they decide they have to be on CID because they are now sixty. But CID is not a pension. It is not automatic. CID is a cash, a cash program, that's a cash transfer program that is aimed at targeting persons who are vulnerable, persons who have low income or low income. And this is the whole objective of the program, persons who are disabled and so on. So we promised to introduce the CID benefit card, as you remember. And ladies and gentlemen, we are doing just that. Things happening. We are in the final stage of distributing the CID card. To date, we have distributed cards in the parishes of St. George's, St. Andrew, St. David. And next week, the parish of St. Patrick will be receiving the card. The parishes of St. John's and St. Mark's will be completed the following week. So before Christmas, every beneficiary will have their card. And the the ministry, the department dealing with CID, the CID program, always do orientation and so on to help people to understand how to use the card and so on. So it takes a little time before they roll out because you have to do the training and ensure that they could manipulate the card. Ladies and gentlemen, we have promised and we have delivered by promising by providing an easier hassle-free mechanism that will improve the livelihood of our nation's citizens. In addition, we have not only stopped at improving the distribution mechanism, but we have also focused our attention on improving the program in its entirety. The ministry has taken this bold step to review the target tool that is used in the selection and approval of applications. Most times, people complain that they apply and then they fail and they cannot understand why they fail. But based on the criteria that is used, the system will knock them off. So what we have done, we have reviewed the tool. And now we have a wider bandwidth so more people can get into the program when they apply. Therefore, given the changes in the socioeconomic environment in the World Bank, the World Bank is providing technical assistance in reviewing and enhancing the tool. And we have completed that. I am pleased to report that the tool has been updated and piloted among a small percentage of people to determine the effectiveness of the new tool and it will be rolled out shortly. Burial Relief Income Support Program, BRIS. The BRIS program managed by the Government of Grenada through the support from the World Food Program has just been completed. The program was designed to provide six months of income support to qualify beneficiaries whose livelihood was negatively impacted by Hurricane Burial in the parishes of St. Patrick, St. Andrew, St. John, St. Mark, Karaku, and PT Matnik. The program commenced in January and a total number of eight hundred and sixty-nine persons benefited from the program, which resulted in a payout of over three point six million dollars. Things happening. Build Back Equal. The Ministry of Social Development, in collaboration with UN Women, will be piloting a public assistance program aimed at strengthening the care system in Grenada. The aim of this pilot program is to facilitate access to care services, job skills, education, and other support services for beneficiaries of the CID program. And this is to showcase the benefits of improved gender responsiveness in social protection program. So what we are doing through the Build Back Equal program is to train some of our beneficiaries to give them skill so they do not have to remain on the program forever, the young mothers especially. So we're trying to empower people. This program will be implemented in 2026 for a period of one year. A total of twenty-five persons from four parishes will be part of this project. The project provides a platform that will empower our CID beneficiaries to be self-sufficient, independent, and uplift this vulnerable family which will facilitate transition out of the CID program. At the end of the project, an extensive assessment will be conducted to determine the possibility of expanding it to other beneficiaries. Policy framework. The ministry continues to strengthen policy frameworks with a number of policies across the various units within the ministry aimed at improving overall efficiency of the programs and projects. To date, a total of three policies presented has been reviewed. Rehabilitation Center, halfway house. The ministry is in the process of completing preliminary arrangements to facilitate the construction of a halfway transition home for children who aged out of the, of children's homes. So you know, we have children's home on the island. We have Father Malagan's home, we have the Bel Air home, we have Smiles and others. And at the age of eighteen, these children are expected to leave these facilities to return to families, sometimes they end up on the street. So our approach is to provide this halfway home for them where they could be trained, where their skills and interests can be developed into whatever skill area they want to be part of. And they will be there for two years. And from after two years, they will be on their own. By that time, they should find a job, they might be able to rent, they might be able to earn. And that is the whole objective of the program. So we don't want when children reach eighteen years, they're out on the streets. So we're trying to develop halfway homes so they can transition into the world of work. And this center will be housed at the former location of the Carlton Home in Paris, St. George's. It is anticipated that construction will commence 2026. Things happening. Infrastructureal development. Across all zones, we have three zones. In the Ministry of Social and Community Development, we have three zones. So across all the three zones, we had forty major projects completed on the airing completion, improving road, drains, retaining wall, community facilities. And you've heard Brother Toz speak extensively of those in his constituency. And this is replicated right through the country. In St. Andrew's northwest, for example, we have erected lights in two of the playing fields and one community gentleman donated a bush shed as giving back to the community. So we have this bush shed up in Marybow and we had one building in Monton, through Community Development. Skills training and capacity building. Over three hundred participants benefited from training and certification program this year aiming at improving employability and economic independence. Courses include electrical installation, plumbing, office administration, property management, Creole language, and live song engineering. The group that did Creole language, they are in St. Lucia, about to return. Now, from the south, they went to St. Lucia to interact there with the people who speak Creole to test whether they learn. So things are happening. In addition, community-based initiatives such as adult literacy, makeup, and sewing program, including training at Old West Hall Community Center and the continuation of Malmont program have expanded skills opportunity, particularly for women and girls. Youth and community development. Youth engagement and wellness remain at the heart of the ministry's work. Highlights include the Anti-Drug and Anti-Violence March held in collaboration with Nova Spark, a youth retreat and youth impact held in collaboration with Nova Spark. A youth retreat and youth impact day theme, Bridging Generation, Changing Lives, all fostering leadership and positive social values for our young people. The Southern Zone Wellness Fair brought together government agencies and NGOs to provide free health screening and social support to hundreds of residents. In St. Andrew, the ministry provided small business, medical, and laptop assistance along with support for six Saraka Festival, Father's Day activities, a Utah Forum, and the distribution of back-to-school supplies to students. Housing. The Low-Income Housing Program for 2025 has been one of continuation and steady progress. Things happening. As many of you know, the program faced some challenges. A shortage of key building material slowed our pace as suppliers were sometimes unable to meet the high demand generated by the national effort. Nonetheless, our team persevered and delivered meaningful results across every parish. For 2025, I am proud to report the following achievements. One hundred and sixty homes repaired, one hundred and twenty one hundred and twenty-three new houses were built, and ninety-seven bathrooms constructed, providing dignity and better living conditions for our citizens. And these bathrooms are outside of the wash program. So things happening. The achievements of 2025 demonstrate that community development and housing is alive and thriving from the north hills of St. Patrick to the south coast of St. George's and the heart of St. Andrew. We have built homes, roads, and walls. And in the process, strengthened communities that are empowered, skilled, and united in purpose. As we move towards 2026, the ministry remains committed to building communities, empowering people, and transforming lives across our nation. Things happening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Senator the Honorable Gloria Thomas. Indeed, things are happening, not just in your constituency, but across Grenada, Karaku and PT Matnik. So thank you once again for your presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, now we move to Minister for Education. Let's welcome Senator the Honorable David Andrews.
Good evening, everybody. Are you happy to be here? Are you happy to be here? I just heard about six or seven people on that side on our tree here. Are you happy to be here? All right, we're going somewhere. So allow me to acknowledge our Honorable Prime Minister, Dickon Mitchell, and my cabinet colleagues here on the head table and our distinguished cabinet colleagues who are not on the head table, senators, permanent secretaries, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. I'm very happy that you have made it this evening to this accountability session, this session where we come back to you. We promised that we were going to stay in touch. We promised that we were going to give a con to you. And this is what we are doing when we come with these town hall meetings. This administration, led by our Honorable Prime Minister, is one that keeps its word. And so, ladies and gentlemen, even before I share updates both on my ministry and what's been happening across the constituency, I just want us to remember to bear in mind and in prayer our brothers and sisters in Jamaica, Haiti, Cuba, and even to some extent, the Bahamas, who are being ravaged by, or who have been, I would say, by the hurricane Melissa. And pray for God's intervention, His provision for all of the needs, His protection even in the aftermath of this devastating hurricane. I want to assure you in the same breath that thanks to our Prime Minister, the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, led by Honorable Handel and his team at the Foreign Affairs Department, we were able to evacuate our students from Jamaica proactively. And a couple of the parents, at least two of them, reached out to me in gratitude, PM, for our proactivity in ensuring that our students were brought home. There were some who traveled away from Jamaica on their own before the storm. So we presumed that they're okay too. And there are a couple who refused to come for whatever reasons. But we have been in touch with the registrar. And while communication has been interrupted from most of the, all of the persons we've been in touch with, yes, we know they're okay, but there are a couple that we have not been able to come into contact with yet. But that could be because of communication challenges, yeah? But we constantly stay in touch with the school. In the meantime, we have been assured by our ambassador in Cuba, Ambassador Glenn Noel, that all of our students in Cuba, those who were in Santiago de Cuba, they have all been safe. They are all safe, they have been evacuated to Havana, and they're in a safe place. So I want us to rest assured that our foreign missions are working. And I want to put on record to our gratitude to Ambassador Kerry Frank, who from Florida assisted in getting all of this done, right? So thanks and kudos to them. So quickly, I want to share some updates on things happening in education. So I'll try to work this. Right, I will not speak with this list because I will just pass it. But let me give you a brief overview of some of the very important things that's been happening in education that I want us to not forget. And so the, we do believe that education is the key to breaking the poverty cycle. I know it's the truth for me. I know it's the truth for me, and I hear some people say, "Me too." And if you listen to the Prime Minister's story, you would hear the same thing, even his UN address very recently. And so we are convinced as a government that the more we invest in our human resource, in our human capital, the greater our likelihood of transforming the country's fortunes, right? So let's talk about this, the Tibetan schools and the Centers of Excellence. You've heard much talk about that. We are advancing our plans to mainstream Tibet, technical and vocational education and training in our schools. So apart from expanding the offering of Tibet in our primary schools, which we've done, so more primary school students are exposed to that, and I want you to remember that. We are also mainstreaming Tibet in our secondary schools. And there's an active plan, an active team, just like we have Project Polaris. We do have a delivery team mechanism, if you want to call it that, specifically charged with the responsibility of getting the Centers of Excellence for agriculture at the Marybow Farm School, for fishing at the Tamsi C Campus in Karaku. So all the marine studies and all of that will be done there, boat building and all the science of fishing and the business of it. For hotel and tourism management and for furniture making and construction. And in the first instance, that will be in Snell Hall. So it would be renovation and expansion work to the facility that's already there. That team is working. They have been in the process of, they've contracted a consultant, they've gone through the process of going through the procurement to get to get a number of different persons expressing interest. And those consultants will walk us through. They have expertise in those very areas and fleshing out Tibet programs. And so they will help us on the technical areas of fleshing out and aligning the Tibet program to our programs in school. So that the aim is that by third form, at the end of third form, students within our secondary school system can choose a track that says, "I want to do fishing professionally," or "I want to do agriculture professionally and get state-of-the-art training," or hotel and tourism management. And they can veer off into those areas without taking on the burden and the pain of doing all these additional areas that sometimes they're not interested in. So we are strategically and thoughtfully putting together a meaningful plan to address some of the challenges that the system faces in addressing the Tibet needs across our country. Things happening. We talk about school repairs, and there are a number of schools undergoing rebuilds right now. So you'd notice while there was some holdup at the Anglican School in Grenville, that has, the work there has recommenced. So they are doing a lot of foundation work right now. We have the expansion to the primary, pre-primary school at the Sacred Heart in Tivoli. That's happening, collaboration with the Pearl. We have the Saint David's Catholic Secondary School going full blast ahead. We have the Grenada Christian Academy making great strides. And we anticipate, I mean, sooner than later. In fact, we are much closer to the end than we were a couple of months ago. And so I don't think we have as much time to wait as when we started. So all of these schools are actively being rebuilt. We have the Seventh-day Adventist, Saint George's Seventh-day Adventist, that the ministry, the government contributed 1.5 million dollars to in the efforts to rebuild the school. That's going well too. And we, yes, that deserves an applause. And it's important to note that these new infrastructural buildings, they're being built with access, so lifts and ramps, to make sure nobody's left behind, climate smart, and, you know, 21st century-ready and compliant infrastructure for education, right? So know that these things are happening. And then there are other schools like Saint Giles and Florida has been tendered. They're just waiting to complete the temporary relocation structures to have this official sort turning to be able to start the actual building of the reconstruction of the Florida government. The Saint Giles, the concepts have been reviewed. So good things are happening, but we're just making sure they happen well, given the capacity and the capacity constraints that we have. Let's talk quickly about the mathematics strategy. You will know that we have been plagued in our region with poor performances in mathematics, and the ministry continues to engage this challenge head-on. So we have had passed at the cabinet level a mathematics strategy that incorporates a number of interventions that we anticipate will directly impact positively on the mathematics outcomes within our schools. And we've had a two-day, sometime in July, we had a two-day math symposium where we had specialists from across the region, retired math professors, teachers, school officials, union officials, and all concerned with the performance of mathematics in dialogue. And we had Professor Lois George, senior mathematics professor from Jamaica, come down to us and share with us. And some very instructive sharings were done. We also conducted a study led by our own Dr. Andrew Martin that gave us insight into the practices of mathematics, the practices of practitioners in mathematics across the country. And that is helping to inform us to refine the strategy that we use to help get better outcomes in mathematics. Among the things that we are doing is introducing specialized mathematics teaching at the primary level. Now, this is very significant because, as it is, you don't have specialized mathematics teaching across the board. What you have is that one teacher at the primary level is required to teach everything. So if that teacher is not as comfortable in a particular topic, they're still required to teach it. And so sometimes even from that level, you find persons glossing over some topics, teaching it lightly, avoiding it. And so you can have crystallization of some of the challenges in mathematics, even from that level. Now, when we do specialized mathematics teaching from the primary level, we are eliminating or reducing the chances that persons are less competent. In fact, we are choosing persons who are qualified in mathematics, who have been trained in mathematics, and whom we are working with continuously to keep upgrading with the correct pedagogical techniques and strategies to effectively deliver mathematics education across the primary level. Now, to date, yes, it's a good place to clap, yeah? In September this year, we started this with a pilot of fourteen primary schools. So this is happening as we speak in Saint Patrick's Anglican, Hummitage Government, Hillsborough Government, Saint Andrews Catholic, Holy Cross Catholic, Saint Joseph's Catholic, that's in Palm Rose. It's happening in Saint David's Catholic, in Corinth Government, in Bonne Government, in Saint Peter's Catholic, Granroy Government, Cali's Government, Saint George's Anglican Senior, and Saint George's Methodist. So that, the specialized mathematics teaching is happening across these schools. Twenty-three teachers were previously trained, teachers with competence, and content in mathematics were trained in the pedagogical techniques prior to its commencement in September 2025. And we look forward to rolling that out and expanding it further till we have full specialized mathematics teaching across the primary level. Right, devices and eBooks? Well, I probably wouldn't talk too much about that because not too long ago, we did a fantastic launch of the eBooks and devices, laptops and eBooks for the Form One and Form Two students. And you know, recently, I found it very comical that somebody said someplace that I was a liar because I went in a press conference and I said initially that we were going to have a cost-sharing arrangement. Because the initial thought, when I brought the idea to cabinet, based on discussion with my staff and the management in education, was a cost-sharing arrangement where the government would pay about probably sixty, seventy percent, and parents will pay thirty, yeah, forty, thirty, or something like that. So it was going to be a cost-sharing in my mind. But when I went to the cabinet with it, the wisdom of the cabinet and the deliberate intent to invest in our nation's children had my idea overridden. And standing on the wisdom and the judgment of my cabinet colleagues, led by the Prime Minister, I was happy to go back and say, although I said we were going to have cost-sharing, the wisdom of the cabinet said, "We've got it for free." What could be the problem with that? We investing in our children, and we anticipated the returns. So this is not about lying. This is not about misrepresenting stuff. It is, it was what I said it was, and then it became what I said it became. You know, things happening. And so, the ministry has started deliveries even before the midterm holiday. Some schools were already delivered to. They'll be engaging you, parents. I think Grenada Christian Academy had their deliveries done already. They have a schedule of delivering to schools. They will engage you, parents, because there are some things they'd want to share with you as well about how to manage. Because these devices, the over three thousand, seven hundred and something devices, cost us about nine point two million dollars along with the eBooks. That's a significant investment into our nation's children. Things happening. And here what? Not only did we give them military-grade devices, and ask the technicians, I saw one of them on one of his lives examining the specs and talking about what it meant to be called military-grade, and the memory and the durability and... So you can go and check it out. It's military-grade. But not only that, we have on them about thirty-three eBooks, books that actually align with the book list, and that's significant. So no longer do you have to carry, or your children have to carry, the heavy book packs for Form Ones and Twos to strain their backs and their spines. They simply have the books at home back, none of that, no more home back. Right? So they can actually use the book list, the books that are on the book list in Form Ones and Twos. And that's a three-year contract we have. As they go into Form Three, we'll incorporate them. Those coming into Form One, we'll incorporate them too. So we'll phase it in into the system gradually to maintain sustainability. But that's a significant investment, nine point two million into the Form Ones and Twos into our educational infrastructure. And there are other things coming too. The EMIS, which is the Education Information System, Information Management System, and the Learning Management System. Those things are taking a little bit longer, all of the procurement processes that we have to go through. But eventually, we'll get those too, so that we can have more learning resources in the e-learning management system, network, and infrastructure that we want for our nation's children. Let's talk about Tamsisi and increasing enrollment. Listen, there are increasing numbers of young people going to Tamsisi and to Nilo since we have taken away the tuition fees that parents had to pay. And I want to repeat that, you know, because some people have gone and erroneously and falsified information to the public, as is their custom, trying to insinuate that there are decreasing numbers of students and increasing dropout. Well, I have the statistics here, and I shared it in parliament one time. I shared it in parliament, but as of 2024, the numbers completing were at two thousand and fifty-seven. In 2019, 2020, the numbers were one thousand six hundred and sixty-nine. In 2020 and 2021, the numbers were one thousand seven hundred and forty-something. In 2024, that number was two thousand and fifty-seven. I'm showing you it's increasing. And not only that, in consultation with the Chair of Council, the Tamsisi Council, and the Principal, in a recent meeting we've had, they indicated that this year, 2025, is the year that they've had the strongest enrollment since. So I have instructed them to supply me with the enrollment data so I can share it with you once it becomes available. But know that it's even better than this figure that I've just shared for 2024. Not only that, the dropout rate is decreasing too. Because in 2024, we only had, for whatever reason, and I say dropout broadly, because dropout could mean people going to Canada, it could mean they travel, it could mean, right, it could mean any number of different things. So I am not disaggregating to say what is the cause of discontinuation. But that rate is only seven T, seven zero. In 2019 and 2020, it was two hundred and fifty-three. Go to the Reddish's office. In 2020 and 2021, it was two hundred and two. Well, in COVID, it went up to five hundred and something. So I don't blame anybody for that. I don't blame anybody, of course, we were not in office in COVID, right? But I'm still saying, I'm not blaming anybody for the high numbers of five-something in COVID. But those before. But I'm saying in 2024, it's seven zero. And some people have the gall to go in the public airspace and talk about increased dropout rate because lack of transport. Don't listen to that. Things happening. And listen, the same is true for Nilo, by the way. Nilo's enrollment from the very first year we did this is possible, right? Same thing is happening in Nilo. And let's talk a little bit about scholarships. We have been issuing quite a lot of scholarships. It's a big thing for us. And I want to talk quickly about the Monroe First Generation Scholarship Opportunity. This is very transformative because this targets, this First Generation Scholarship Opportunity targets households where nobody had gone to a university before. We target families where parents never thought, where children never thought that they probably could have gone to a university, where they wondered, "Could I ever do this thing? Could I ever go to a university? Do I have what it takes?" These are the families that we've targeted. And our recent one, we had almost eighty or so Grenadians awarded scholarships. But for 2025, a total of a hundred and eleven households, individuals, first-generationers got scholarships, compliments to the government of Grenada and Monroe University. Things happening. You see, this means that ordinary Grenadians, you see, when we talk about poor, when we talk about helping people up, when we talk about lifting people and giving them betterment, it's not giving them twenty dollars every day. It's not giving them a hundred dollars even, but it's giving them this opportunity. And that's what this government is about. So we've had that, and we are quite proud of that for 2025. And let me tell you, parents, if you're interested, and nobody in your household has gone to university, and they've gone to college, they've finished secondary school, they can go on to Monroe University page, check their programs online. If there are programs that they're interested in, and they have some excellent programs. They have programs in cybersecurity, they have programs in computing, in the necessary areas. They have programs in environmental health. They have programs even in nursing, in forensic policing, hotel and tourism management. They have great programs, media, communication, study, good, good programs. So go if you're interested in one of the programs, and you're the first person in your family. Apply, get accepted, and then apply to the Ministry of Education, and you could be one of fifty persons considered for the next cohort, which we will take on for September 2026. But there are other scholarship, oh. So let me stay there still, if I went to the constituency. There are other scholarships too. For students who are Grenadians and who go to Saint George's University and you get accepted, there is a ninety percent scholarship that you get because of the agreement that the government has with the university. You get ninety percent off the tuition cost. So know that off the bat, once you get accepted to the programs. For all of the programs, I think it's accept medicine, so I don't want to mislead you because I wasn't quite clear until a couple, until a year ago, when I learned that peculiarity existed. So, but you get ninety percent off, so you only have to pay ten percent of the tuition. And here what? The better part is, if you have a good grade point average, that's above three, or three point five, I think it is, you can apply to the Ministry of Education, and you can get that ten percent to complete a hundred percent sponsorship in your program. Things happening. Only that those are competitive, so you'll have to go through an interview. You'll have to have the best grade point average. You'll have to have the best motivation and that kind of stuff because sometimes it's only about forty, or it's only about different numbers based on the enrollment at the university, okay? But that's available. And we also have, for students who are interested in studying at the campuses of the University of the West Indies, we have the Economic Cost Scholarships. So most of the students we've brought back from Jamaica, with the exception of a few that we've given special consideration for full scholarships, most of them might be on economic cost scholarship, which allows the government to pay between sixty-six and two-thirds to eighty percent of the cost of the tuition to study in those territories. So if you're interested in studying at the Cave Hill in Barbados, the Mona Campus in Jamaica, and hopefully they're open about and running soon, God help them all. And in Saint Augustine in Trinidad, you'll be exposed to the economic cost scholarships at the Ministry of Education. Get accepted, apply to us, and you should be able to get those, right? I think I talked about SGU and, yeah. So I'll pass quickly to the constituency updates. And indeed, I can say a lot, but quickly, let me just point at a few things here. Here we have, to your extreme left, we are doing the extension of a brand-new piece of road in the Gotil area in Croshu, Felix Park. It's an area with several households going far in. But we have to stabilize the top wall and the bottom wall, so that's the start of the project. I think it's a lot more advanced than when this picture was taken, but it's just to show you that that's happening. This area here, you are looking at some drainage work in the café area and some pavement in an area that extends the road into areas that were never paved before. And so good work is happening in those areas, café and Felix Park, Gotil in Croshu and café. Here, we're talking café again, and we have a number of homes in that area, and so there's an accessway. Initially, it was meant to be a footpath, but it got a little wider so that it can accommodate a vehicle for the senior citizens who live there, who might be able to come out. So, and that's in the café area again, right? We're talking Marky here. Quite a number of pieces of work were done in Marky. In this area, we had some construction, pavement work done, slipper drains as well. And you're not seeing it in this picture, but there was a significant water drain that was constructed in the Marky area to take water away from some homes and into the main drain catchment area in the Marky area as well. We're moving quickly. And here we have, in the post-royal area, this was village support to a number of households living down- this was village support to a number of households living down a slope right to the, how you call it, in the hole in, in, um, in Post Royal. Couple of families benefited well from this work. And there were some other pieces in Post Royal which are not reflected here. And these are some drainage works, I think it's, it's found itself in the wrong slide, but yes, drainage works that were done in preparation for paving at one point. Here we have, to your left, top, it's a wonderful piece of work that was done just below SASS. Just below SASS Hill, that piece of pavement was, was done there. For years, in fact, that whole piece along the SASS plain, if you come right down, that was done during this period. And that's just a piece of it in Telescope there. In the bottom, we are looking at some road work, that development and pavement work that was done in the Mon-Fan area in Hope. You caught them, it wasn't completed at the time, but the youngsters there, the contractors there did excellent work and we're quite happy with the work there. Moving across it, I think that's the same thing here. This picture to the rightmost is a pavement and slipper drain portion of road that was done in Grand Bacolette. So you realize we're not leaving out any community, we're not leaving out any PD. Everybody gets in their touch, things happening. In fact, when I went there, let me just tell you, when I went in this, in this village, you know what the villagers said? They said, Mr. Andrew, watch with that road here. You don't have to come back, no, no comeback, just come back next time to make sure you read this thing. Because they're ready. That's what they told me. And here we were, we were opening the Telescope Primary School Road, which was a highly anticipated project by the residents of Telescope. And I hear some of them clapping and cheering, yes. It was a highly anticipated project because for decades, that piece of road in front of the Telescope Primary School remained in shambles and you drove through it and you had to be banging up and down. If you had a pregnant wife going there, you swear you make the baby before you finish go through there. But anyhow, at the front there were the contractors, but this is just a couple of pictures off the road, it has just lifted the whole village. I happened to visit there one time after and a couple of guys were washing down the car with me and they were like, boss, the whole village just raze because of access, the road, yeah? And so that's the Telescope Primary School Road. It's about 884 feet of road with concrete pavement, gaps and all, yeah? And we were assisted ably by the Mobilization Ministry Minister, Andy Williams, yes. My boy, right? Right, so let's talk a little bit about the lighting of fields, streets, et cetera. So we start with St. Martin de Porres. One of the things we did early this year was to light the Croshu playing field at the Croshu St. Martin de Porres School. And so for the first time this year, they had, they had the sports meet under lights, some parts of it, yeah? They had some parts of it under light and the residents were extremely thrilled with the solar lights being put there. And I remember when, when persons said, you're putting in Croshu, what made the progress pack? Things happening. Right? And in collaboration with Minister Lennox Andrews, we were able, we collaborated to light the, 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 the Chinese Hill Play, Play Area. So that's what you're seeing here, we collaborated to get that done. And persons swayed there, they played there, they do community stuff there, right in that, the development inside Subies. We share a lot of the residents, the constituents there, Honorable Andrew and myself. But also, Minister Andrews didn't talk about the long wall, the, the lighting from Granville, even the bus terminus. From the bus terminus, the long wall, going down into Subies where you have all the Fish Friday and all of that. Somebody lighting took place and that has enhanced the outlook of the, the area. And that's what we hear about, we hear about improving the quality of life of the people of St. Andrew. Things happening. Bit by bit, step by step, brick by brick. And so we want to talk quickly. Amen. We talk about the lighting of the Hope Beach. So the whole beach, again, that was lit, solar lights and we have a number of lights on the whole beach, spanning the entire length of the beach. And that has enhanced the patronage of the beach. A lot of the activities that happen on the, on holidays, they're better subscribed right now because of that and patrons speak very, very highly of this project, the lighting of the whole beach. Things happening there too. And what you're seeing here, that's the early stages on the right of the construction of bathroom and change room, toilet facilities on the whole beach. And by the way, I want to say here, this is a project of the National Democratic Congress. Because I've heard some people in some other colors going in some parts and telling people that they're doing this project, it's another lie. You hear what I'm saying? So two persons came to me from St. Andrew's Southeast and they say, minister, I hear they, they, they tell somebody that they're getting the project done in Hope. I say, oh, yeah? I'm sure PS Jeffrey wouldn't like to hear that as Minister for Social Development under whose ministers watch, whose PS watch? Yes, you know, right? But this is happening and I'm sure it's much more advanced than you're seeing it here because that was taken quite a while. And just to talk a little bit, well, in collaboration with the Minister for Sports and Home Ministry, we all in St. Andrew, we were thrilled to see Progress Park lit. I mean Progress Park, yes. Big shout, big. I mean Progress Park ideally falls in St. Andrew's Southeast by boundary demarcation, but the truth is, it's such an important area for all of us. That is a, is a, is a big St. Andrews thing. It's the home of Paradise FC, it's, it's, it's the home of cricket, it's the home of Telescope. I mean, the cricketers will tell you all kind of thing, but they don't want that. It's the home of SASS, it's the home of, yeah? So, but we were happy to have it lit and to have the ribbons cut for the play park. And probably Ministers' force will tell you a little bit more about the, the finalization of all the lighting and all the great stuff that's happening there. So I wouldn't say more, but we are happy to have that happen. So those were just, um, images from then and aerial photos from that. And trust me, there is much more to come. There is a lot more to come, let me just tell you. So we did, a couple of months ago, we did the dredging of the river in Croshu. Now, this was a family whose house, a couple of homes in that area, just at the base of Modest Hill, were threatened every time the rain fell severely. And the water, they'd call me and show me where the water would run into their house and it would damage their downstairs and it would, and they pleaded for years to get it addressed. But we were able to dredge the river and bank it to create a, 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 a more manageable channel for the water to pass through and so far, it's working well. But we were able to do that not just there, but lower down too, on Lambert Bridge. We were able to dredge the river, because you remember last November, when the heavy rains fell, you remember what happened on Lambert Bridge? It flooded, it almost mashed up thing, it threw down the man sharp. So we did a similar thing, just a little lower down on Lambert Bridge. But not only that, I think I may have a picture or two of it. So let me see if I could slide on. Yes, so that's the Lambert Bridge one there, we did the same thing there. The pond was reconstructed so people can play, there are no safety swim things in there. And we are doing, we did an expansion to the width of the road on one side and we erected a railing where there was no railing. It's not finished yet because we have some overhangings to cut and we're waiting on Grand Lake based on the positioning of the wires to, to have them cut. But we are putting in additional railings, we've extended the railings on the main road. So that's happening there, that's the one in the middle. But what you're seeing where the gentleman is standing here is where we expanded by about two or so feet the road so that you don't have to pass on a narrow strip and feel as though you're going to drive down into the river on Lambert Bridge. And then the railing, there's a railing that's now up there, that, these are not the most updated pictures, and there's going to be a slipper drain on the side that's additionally going to widen the road and then they're going to complete the, the railings on the side. Quickly, we're doing quite a bit of housing. So I'll just, I'll just skip shoot to make you realize that in different parts, in some cases with the assistance of MIT Post-Beril and in many cases with the assistance of Sister Glow and the Community Development and Housing Development Division of the Ministry of Social Development, we are getting quite a lot of good housing done across the constituency. So just so you see, different ones, quite a lot is happening. And if I shared like Minister Andrews about from the last three years, we'd have a lot of housing, but this year the figures are probably a lot lower. And you notice this year, they're building bathrooms as well in these. So that's a major improvement, yeah? Not only do you give them, even from social development, give them these little houses and they still have to go outside in the night. No, improvement, things happening. You get in the house and you get in the bathroom one time too. Right? Yes, so you have more of that. So we have five new builds, 24 house repairs, six bathrooms completed. And that's outside of the wash, because the wash itself is a different story. A couple of house repairs and new builds in progress, right? In, there have been several constituency engagements across the entire constituency from Marky to Croshu to, I'm not sure I remember where that was. But interestingly, this one, the one in the middle was very interesting. I met a group of children in café and they were like, minister, we want to, we want to spend a day with you. Bring us to work with you one day now, bring us to work with you one day. So guess what? I did organize a day with the minister. I organized a day with the minister for them, well, it's not here yet. So they spent a day with me where I took them to parliament, I took them to see the Prime Minister, I took them to the Speaker of the House, they got to see a number of things and then we dined at one of the restaurants at no charge to them, you know? So they got to spend. Right? Things happening for the children even, right? They wanted to spend that day with me. But these are photos of several community areas, Croshu, I see Croshu there, I see Café here. I'm not sure where this is, I can't remember whose house this is. But we're in the field, we're on the ground, just making you know. Boots on the ground. Of course, the water, the wash sanitization, I think this picture is when Brother Lennox Andrew was doing his opening. But somebody, the, the pictures you're seeing are current images of the 20 or so beneficiaries in the Telescope area who are now receiving these upgraded wash facilities. They're not yet officially handed over, that's being planned. So in short order, you would see that happening, but these are just some images of the progress happening in Small Bay and Big Bay Telescope with over 20 or so beneficiaries getting, right? So good things are happening, things happening for Telescope as well. Right? Oh, these are pictures of the children on the bus tour with me, so they went to different parts. You can see at the extreme left top, there with the parliament, we were at Grand Atang Lake, we stopped there. We stopped at some of our projects, we stopped at SASS, we stopped different ones so they could see what was happening in the constituency. And then we brought them down to the ministry where they were in the parliament. You've seen them at the parliament there, so I got to show them different prime ministers. I got to tell them some things about the parliamentary process and all of that when they visited with us. These are just wonderful community engagements. But I, I sense my time is coming to an end, so I will, I will rest. I, I see the chairperson walking behind me, but I just, I want to leave you with two words like my colleagues before. Things happening.
So I think we found our new slogan. He forgot to mention I was a part of the, the lighting of the Progress Park. I took before photos of the play park that was deteriorating, so I think, you know, you need to just, you could just put it in your presentation, that I took the photos. All right, and now we move to Ministry of Youth, Sports, Mental Health and Religious Affairs. Let's welcome our Minister, the Honourable Delma Thomas, to make her presentation.
A lot of things are happening around Grenada, Karikku and Pity Martnik. So we are in St. Andrew tonight and you're hearing all the things that are happening in St. Andrew, but it's duplicated across the trial and state of Grenada, Karikku and Pity Martnik. Let me acknowledge our Prime Minister and all the members of the head table, my cabinet colleagues in the audience and the beautiful people of St. Andrew. Good evening. It is always a pleasure to report to the people the true heartbeat of our nation. We are above all servants of the people and this town hall is another opportunity to listen, to share and to be accountable. Tonight is a session from part, sorry, tonight's session from part of our ongoing community touchdown. So we touching down here tonight, but as a St. Andrew team, we touching down everywhere. So we did Granville, we did Subies and we'll continue to touch down across St. Andrew. This is a commitment to stay connected, to meet our citizens where they are and to ensure that governance remain grounded in the realities of the people. Our government is committed to holistic development. And so I want to report on the ministries. So I'll start with the Ministry of Mental Health and we do have a video that I want to play for you, so have a look.
New beginnings for mental health. The Ministry of Mental Health Wellness and Religious Affairs has found a new comfortable home in Archibald Avenue. A comfortable serene environment which aids in boosting productivity is what this new home is and it will be commissioned and blessed on November 26, 2025.
The month of October is recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month, observed under the theme "Access to Services: Mental Health in Catastrophes and Emergencies." One of the ministry's initiatives was to deliver hampers to outpatient in all parishes including Karikku and Pity Martnik, highlighting care and concern for all patients.
On October 10th, World Mental Health Day, mainland staff joined those on the sister aisle for a seminar and mental health awareness drive. The ministry also hosted church services, community outreach programs, a mental health walk with patients of Mungay and many other programs which helped to spread awareness on the topic of mental health and push the agenda to end the stigma against mental health.
To observe Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, under the theme "Hope in Action: Form Awareness to Policy Change", the ministry hosted a series of consultations, educating the public about the sensitive topic of suicide and suicide prevention and also highlighted the need to decriminalize suicide. The Community Mental Health Nursing Initiative also begun, which plays a vital role in delivering mental health support to psychosocial challenge individuals. This approach facilitates early intervention and aids in reducing admissions at the hospital.
Much-needed infrastructural enhancement was also completed at the Mungay Psychiatric Hospital, inclusive of fencing the property. The building is now safer and more conducive for work and rehabilitation.
An addition of 30 fit-for-purpose beds were also added to the facility to improve comfort and safety of the patients and nurses.
The Minister of Mental Health Wellness and Religious Affairs remains steadfast in her commitment to advancing mental health care and access for all in Grenada.
So my dear brothers and sisters, a lot of things are happening in mental health. You see, brothers and sisters, there is no health without mental health. And so we have to end stigma and discrimination. Because you see, while mental health may affect my family, it can affect yours also. So we must all be our brothers and sisters keeper. Your government is committed and will continue to work in that in those regard. I'd like to move to the Ministry of Youth and Sports. So maybe with all the slides, I, I need to just speak to what is happening as it relates to the Ministry of Youth and Sports. And I want to start where my colleague. So brothers and sisters, we are no longer talking about the new Imani program, because that's an old program, a lot of years old. And we have a lot of people who are there over 10, 11, 12 years in a program training. You can't train for life. There are training that you can do, continuous training, but you cannot be in one place. There are training that you can do, continuous training, but you cannot be in one place training for eight hundred and seven hundred dollars. So brothers and sisters, what we now calling it the new Imani Transition Program. It means that we are transitioning people to permanent engagement. And so we started at the private sector. Because as a government, you cannot be paying people to work in the private sector or giving them a stipend to do real work in the private sector. And so we have transitioned over close to two hundred trainees in the private sector. We have said to the employers, keep them or we'll take them out. And so over a hundred and forty eight, I believe, kept them and we had to deal with the others and transition them, brothers and sisters. You see, this government cares about our young people. We are not, we do not believe in leaving them in programs just for vote. But we are doing and making sure that they get proper remuneration for work done. And so Miss, I almost say Mister Speaker. And so we, so we said we, private sector trainees transitioned, job placement desk established to support employment search, meetings held with state owned enterprise, that already done, first three public sector appraisal. So those in the public service will be appraised and will find either permanent jobs if they are capable or if they are not, then we'll look for new training and other opportunities for them. So we training them for real jobs. Then we have forty trainees transitioning from the Ministry of Sports. So we have forty trainees who were coaches in schools and they will transition, not in contractual jobs, but in permanent jobs. And brothers and sisters, apart from the over one hundred persons I told you about in the private sector, over two hundred trainees were transition within the government system. And more will be done because we are transitioning them. The mic is not working? As a government, we know that there are young women and young men across our country who just finished primary school and a lot of other young men are on the block and on the street. That similar things happen to our young women, they have children, they are home with no jobs. And so we have what we call the elevator. And we're over two hundred participants in CVQ level two and three training and they are placed in different sectors. So a lot of them are involving them CC in Merabo, some are there at the Dulo and other areas. What we hope, brothers and sisters, that at the end of this one year training program, these young people will be transitioned in either permanent jobs or we'll assist them to start their own businesses and provide mentorship for them. Real things are happening. And brothers and sisters, I know the, the other slide speaks to youth in business, I'll get there just now. But we continue the empower program. And that's because, brothers and sisters, it's a program that, so we revise it and we ensure that those who are now, who will be graduating next week, Wednesday, there will be mentorship. So we'll continue to observe them and some of them already find permanent engagement. So while we start with over four hundred, I think our graduation will be under three hundred, some dropped out. And every time with this um program, what we have is young men who coming, looking for, for engagement, but they are not staying. And so we have to find ways and means to deal with our young men. Because remember, these young men will be the husband of our children. So we have to be able to work and deal with the issues that confront our young men. The truth is, we have challenge when it comes to young men. We have challenge with keeping them in jobs. They want what they call a bligh, a, a ten days. And so we have to try to break that stigma, not that stigma, but this kind of way that they're operating. The mentality, yes. So. I am pleased to report that the Youth in Business Program has now been formally launched through a partnership with the Grenada Development Bank. This program will provide young entrepreneurs with access to grants and soft loans to start or expand their own businesses. It also offers mentorship training and financial management support to ensure that these businesses become sustainable. The first call for application generated overwhelming national interest. Notable, the largest number of proposal came from youth interested in agriculture. That need a clap? Because we have to teach our children, our young people to be sustainable. We have to stop eating a lot of those imported foods. We have to change our tastes. Because the truth is, our local foods are healthier. Our local chicken have less antibiotics and so. Our local kalaloo and carrots and all these things, they are good for our health. And so we must take care of our health, because our health is our wealth. So as a government, we are happy that at the end of November, more than fifty young persons will receive, in some instances, grant to assist them to prepare the business plan and, and mentorship assistance. And some who already have businesses and, or who already go through the training will receive soft loans under the Grenada Development Bank. And more will be done in twenty twenty six. Things are continue to happen for our young people. But when you listen to, to the, to some other places, you may hear that things are not happening. When they say things not happening, what they mean is that we are not hiring more Imani trainees. And we are not hiring them for true, because we do not want to keep our young people backward. We are keeping them forward. And so the Ministry of Education, the Minister of Education earlier on spoke to you about the amount of millions we are spending on our young people for the first generational scholarships. I think he didn't even tell you about the amount of millions we are also spending in terms of students getting assistance for SGU. Most students are going to SGU. Most students are getting support or students in sports who get part scholarship. Sometimes they say they get scholarship and when they reach abroad, we have a lot of issues. And so within the ministry, we start to provide them with support to ensure that they can finish their education. Things are happening for our young people. I'm not managing the technology properly. We also have the, our Youth in Parliament. And Youth in Parliament is a training program or it's a program that will assist young people who are aspiring. But in my mind, when you reach to the place where you can now become a caretaker or a candidate for a party, then you have to graduate. So it's a program that will assist you to get to there. And it does not only mean politics, but it's leadership. And so the Youth Parliament Program continues to be a beacon for young people who are interested in leadership. We continue leadership advocacy and volunteer, volunteerism, access to grant funding for community initiative across the different constituencies or parishes, which strengthen youth voice and civil leaderships. Our youth, our young people have a voice. So we had a series of Youth and Mental Health caravan where we give young people a chance to talk, a chance to say how they want to see the country govern. In fact, a lot of the things that we are, that we have, we implementing as a government is because our young people through our youth talk identify them. And so we'll continue as a government to give our young people a voice. And just recently, we had, in my mind, I looked at many of the, the budget consultation across Grenada. And when I saw what we had in, in terms of our young people, I said to our young people, take a bow. They came out in their numbers and they let their voices be heard, saying what they want to see. And this was not a talk shop. It was an exercise that will guide our policies as it relates to youth development. Things are happening for young people. My dear brothers and sisters, we can go ahead talking about community leadership organizational training. We can talk about the number of initiative under the ministry as it relates to, to youth development. But I want to move to sports development. We as a government, we continue to provide support for sports development across ultra island state of Grenada, Karaku and Piti Martnik. It seems like I may have to stop use the, 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 the. Because you see, maybe he doesn't want us, want the people to know that a lot of things are happening in sports also. Across Grenada, we are developing sports across Grenada. And I said to you earlier on that forty coaches were transitioned from the Imani program. But what I did not say to you, that as a government, we are ensuring that in every school, primary, sorry, pre-primary, primary, secondary, that we have coaches. We are ensuring that our children are physically active. Because we can't just sit down and talk every day. We need our children to be physical. Because we are hearing that we have a lot of childhood obesity. And so we have to be keeping, keep moving. And that's not only for children, all of us here, we should be keep moving every single day. We were born to move, so I want to encourage us. Let us move, whether you are a young person, whether you are a child in school, movement is so very important. It, you know, it make you feel so good and not only about weight loss, but even for your own mental health. So I want to encourage you to keep moving. But I want to say to you that the forty coaches will be forty Imani transitioned by a total of seventy coaches. So which mean that as a government, we hired thirty new coaches to ensure that every school across Grenada has at least a coach. If this is not a government that care for you, then I don't know what or who is. This is a government that care about the holistic development of our young people. And so even I know, I know you can recall that there was a period when no sports, no extracurricular activity in school. But now what we're seeing, football return. You know, football returning in school. So I want to congratulate the Grenada Football Association, the Ministry of Education and the Ministry of Sports for collaborating to ensure that we have football in primary school. We know that we have all the sporting discipline in secondary school. But in the primary school, we have football now, we have cricket and more will happen because now we have coaches in every school come Monday. So on Friday, we'll have the launch of the coach program in school. Things continue to happen for sports. We have Karaku despite hurricane challenge, Karaku athletes perform commendable, demonstrating resilience, dedication and unity. Reinforce the ministry's focus on equal inclusion across. So we are ensuring that across Grenada, Karaku and Piti Martnik, that every school has a chance. Just last, about two weeks ago, I went to the stadium and I saw the team from Karaku came down. I think they get lashed, but the bottom line is they are able to play and compete. So things are happening, but we want to thank this government. Because this was the government that decided to pay back the children, the teachers their monies. This is the government that decided to pay the pension. You know, brothers and sisters, sometimes we forget those issues. But we always have to remember, we always have to be reminded. As a teacher, I learned that children learn by repetition. And I know that adults also remember. So we consistently have must be saying to you what this government has done. This government continued, I did not hear the minister talk about the regularization, but I'm not the Minister of Education. I'm just saying that as a government, we continue to provide services that would enable our children to thrive. But you know, I, I can talk about sports and, and, and all the other programs. But I want to go into the what matters most. Because if I'm in St. Andrew, while it is important that I speak about the ministry, it is also even more important that I speak of the constituency that have me standing here. As a government, we believe in accountable and it begins and ends with us. The people who have entrusted us with the privilege to serve, tonight, I want to present to you a report on our shared journey of development in St. Andrew Northwest. A journey driven by partnership, compassion and an unwavering commitment to uplift every family and empower every community. Our vision remains clear, to build a constituency where every child learns, every youth thrives and every family lives, live sorry, with dignity. Guided by the values of equity, empowerment and service. Our work touches life at every level, from the classroom to the playfield and from the home to the health center. In education, we continue to invest in our children, visiting schools regularly, mentoring students and supporting them with supplies and providing the schools with small repairs. We provide support for back to school to every school within the constituency. We went to the every school, Sister Gloria and I, we visited those schools in the constituency and provided them with school supplies. We also have what we call the breakfast program in school. Because we know that some children come to school in the morning without even having a hot cup of tea. So we give milk, cheese and crepes to all the schools in our constituency on a monthly basis. We provide classroom materials to small repairs of the infrastructure of the school. And it's a priority for us to visit the schools regularly and interact with the principal, teachers and also the student. We respond directly to the needs identified on the ground. And so this year, we paid CXC fees for nine students in the constituency. Four, four through the constituency allowance. And that's something we need to talk about. Because you see before, remember I served somewhere else before. And we did not have constituency allowance. If you needed somebody, some assistance for some children, you had to go somewhere else and beg for it. But now we have constituency allowance. And so four of those children received through the constituency allowance. But we also had a private donor who was willing to pay for five. I want to thank that particular individual. We, through the constituency allowance, we have assisted seven students going to St. George's University with partial tuition assistance. So we'd, we'd give them not more than fifteen hundred dollars. Because we have a cut off mark that we can give based on the criteria for the constituency allowance. We provided four laptops to students, two in Form Five and two in Form Three in the constituency. I said, you know, I'm bombarded by the Parkly Government School to, to fence the school. And we must appreciate that safety and security is key. So I want to say on national TV that that will happen before the end of this year. I, we give our commitment. I want to move to elderly within the constituency. Our care and compassion extend deeply to our elderly through our ongoing programs. We continue to provide assistance and I want to zero in on, on, on the seed program. Because as I said earlier on, we always have to repeat. Because if you, you don't have to repeat, people forget that they had an increase under this government in the seed program for elderly. I said people forget and some of you seem as that, you don't even know that. So before elderly household with one person is to get four hundred, I believe. Three hundred, yeah, three hundred. And if there's two persons, then they'll get four. However, what we have now is that the individual household over sixty five and disabled household receive five hundred dollars. That's for individual. But if you have more than one elderly person within your household, you receive seven hundred dollars. Repetition, you must know that. Because when you listen to the radio programs, it sounds like the program, there's, there was no increase. Don't let them tell you about, about the, what they gave during COVID nineteen or so. This was a temporary measure and I'll continue to insist it was temporary. What you're getting now is a pub, is permanent. From our constituency, brothers and sisters, we have our soup kitchen. And our soup kitchen provide soup to the elderly, to close to forty elderly persons Monday, Wednesdays and Friday. Bringing not just nourishment, but also love, dignity and compassion. I want to remind you that elderly, our elderly citizens have made their contribution and so we must treat them with dignity. Just recently, this is the month of the elderly, we are closing. Just recently, the constituency branch, and I want to thank the members of the branch who last Sunday went to the different villages of the constituency and gave the party style one because it was a party event here, it wasn't from the government's program. We got a donor who donated twenty hampers. And so we gave to those who have been serving the National Democratic Congress across the constituency. We continue to provide pampers assistance on a monthly basis. We do have some elderly citizens in our constituency, some who are diagnosed with cancer and need special diet. And so on a monthly basis, we provide them with those assistance towards the diet. Because sometimes it's very expensive and they cannot afford for themselves. For our, things are really happening. For our youth, we are focused on empowerment and opportunity. In entrepreneurship, we have provided some young people on the block with assistance to start their own business. Two persons in the constituency receive with eaters. There are three persons who were doing farming and with all the issues of the hot sun, we provided them with water tanks. We continue to provide assistance with chicken. Some people want to fry chicken and they need some assistance. So we gave them some, two cases of chicken with oil. And we continue to provide support to small, to people who say, I want to start my own business. And so as a government, we'll continue to provide support to them. Sister Gloria identifies some of the lighting as it relates to playing field across the constituency. And so that will be duplicated in every village in our constituency, including Molong. So Molong is a village that is isolated for itself and need our assistance. So we light it, we'll provide a children playground there and we'll try to help them upgrade that particular playing field. A lot is happening in the area of housing development in the constituency and bathroom assistance. So apart from what happening under the Ministry of Social and Community Development, we have the wash program and that completed twenty-three bathrooms in Lacabeque. And at present, the team is in Maribor looking to continue with eighteen new bathroom. These are things that hap, these things are happening, brothers and sisters. We are a lifting of families. We are not looking to see who they vote for to decide whether or not they get a bathroom and toilet. What we are doing is removing them from this whole pit latrine and outdoor bathroom. This is a sanitation issue. And we believe that every citizen across our countries should get bathroom and toilet. And so within the constituency of St. Andrew Northwest, we are doing just that. There are many infrastructure work happening in every village. And we want to thank the Minister of Social and Community Development because things are really happening in that ministry. I see the PS in the audience, we want to thank you for working for the constituency of St. Andrew Northwest. We'll continue to do what it takes as a government to provide support for the people of our constituency of St. Andrew Northwest. In closing, I say thank you to the community leaders, volunteers. You know, as I speak about community leaders, I want to thank the people of Molong. Last Sunday, the Prime Minister got an invitation. So we from the constituency, we did not organize it now, but we talk about community leadership. So the community invited the Prime Minister. And when we were there, we were very, when we went there, we were very impressed. The community came out in their numbers. In fact, I said, we have never seen that, not even in an election year. Not even in an election rally. When I looked around, there were mostly every household, few household were missing. And I could have come them. We had children, we had young people, we had middle age, we had elderly people, they came out in their numbers. And one elderly gentleman look at the Prime Minister and he said, "Prime Minister, thank you for coming because it's the first time we see a Prime Minister walk through this area and is not in a meeting." And so I want to say to Prime Minister, thank you for adhering to one villager, I believe. One or two villagers met him and invited him and he came and they were able to show their leadership. They were able to show their organizational skills. And I believe that can be duplicated, not only in St. Andrew Northwest, but across St. Andrew, because we win St. Andrew tonight. So across St. Andrew, let us invite the Prime Minister. And so we'll invite him one of these days when we are walking through your community. So we might be in a community near you, the team. It's a team, you see, there's no I in the word team. And we are working together to develop you. So brothers and sisters, let us soldier on together as a team. Let us combine our effort together as a team. Because we believe that we can develop St. Andrew. Once we can come together, we can develop St. Andrew. And I spoke about the lighting, I think Minister spoke deep about the lighting. But I also need to say to you that we will be developing Progress Park on a phased approach. You see, we can't do everything one time. Because if we do everything one time, you'll forget. Because just now you forget that people got five hundred and seven hundred dollars for the seed program. So we will develop St. Andrew, the entire St. Andrew, including Progress Park, including Paul's playing field, including other playing fields across St. Andrew together. And so let us work together. Because when the election call next time, I must talk about the election, I'm a politician. And we just a year and something away. So you are seeing all the things that are happening by this government. And so I want to say to you, ensure that when your, your child turn eighteen, they register. Because the young people, you do not have to tell them who to vote for, they are seeing what is happening. And so I say to you, let us soldier on together. Together, we will see a greater Grenville, we'll see a better St. Andrew. Because we are the rural community and so we look into how we can work with agriculture, how we can work to improve Maribor Hospital, what we're doing together as a team. Teamwork makes the work easier, I thank you.
Thank you, Minister Delma Thomas, Minister for Youth, Sports, Mental Health and Religious Affairs. We are doing a lot, a lot is happening. And so I, I think we might have to give an award, Grenville tongue halls are always the longest. We're gonna save, we don't, let's pause on that. All right, so I just want to remind you, there is a newsletter, a monthly newsletter. So if you have not picked up your copy, check with protocol. Additional information on other things that we're doing, that the government is doing is listed in the newsletter. Before we bring on our Prime Minister, I'd like to invite project sponsor of Project Polaris for a quick update on our climate smart medical city.
Thank you very much, Ms. Etienne. I wish to acknowledge the Honorable Prime Minister, our head table of ministers, other cabinet ministers, senators, members of parliament, permanent secretaries and the specially invited guests of St. Andrew. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Andrew St. Bernard and I am the project sponsor for Project Polaris. And so I will take every opportunity to bring news to you about the Project Polaris. We have been working very hard, as you know. I want to give you a very quick, brief update on what we've done and just tell you a little bit about what we have been doing since our last update. Okay, so brief recap. Your health matters and that's why Project Polaris is happening. The vision is to transform healthcare in Grenada and to establish Grenada as the medical center, for the center for medical excellence in the Caribbean, in the region, in the Americas. We all know our current reality. We have a general hospital that's not fit for purpose. It's in, not in a great location to help wellness and improve healthcare. It's not fit for ideal therapeutic care. We know we have a shortage of skilled workers. So we've got significant problems across the healthcare system. We're very much, so this government is committed to investing in our people. The health and wellness of the people of Grenada is a top priority for the government. Investing in our people means investing in healthcare. It means we need to invest in our nurses and our doctors and ensure that they have all that they need to give us the care that we deserve. And the solution that we have proposed and that we have been working very diligently and at breakneck speed to bring to you is Project Polaris. Again, Polaris is the North Star. There's a lot of work to be done on the journey to better healthcare. We'll be building a new hospital and we'll be improving the delivery of healthcare along the way. And in a few years, when we have a new hospital, we will also have improved healthcare delivery for all Grenadians. The new hospital will be a two hundred and fifty bed, smart, climate resilient hospital that will meet the needs of all Grenadians. It will replace the existing hospital. So of course, its primary purpose is to meet the healthcare needs of all Grenadians. All plans, all designs start from what are the healthcare needs of Grenada and how can we best service that? So we've done a lot of work, years, already years of work has gone into this project. And which is why we want to make sure that we keep letting you know what's happening. It takes a lot of planning, it takes a lot of partnership and engagement before we actually see the building coming up. But we're here to let you know, things are happening, a lot is being done. The government has already purchased eighty-four acres of land. We've engaged with many consultants and strategic partners. For example, we've worked with Deloitte to do our feasibility study, to do our strategic business plan, to work on our tourism and retirement plans. We know that we've worked very closely with the Mount Sinai team, our long-term strategic partners who have committed to work with us for the next ten years and beyond and who have already begun working with us at the existing general hospital. We've made some significant headway with these good partnerships that will help us over the next few years as we're on this journey. So speaking about Mount Sinai and the work that they've already begun to do. They're working hand in hand with the general hospital management team and staff. Together, they've identified the key gaps, the key areas that need improvement in the, in the hospital. Again, it's a journey and we have to start somewhere and continue the momentum. Working closely with the hospital team, they've identified these eleven areas for key improvements. And they've been working week after week, month after month, and the work will continue. And we'll continue to bring you news of the improvements and the updates that are happening right now at the general hospital. It includes the lab, the facilities. So notwithstanding that we're building a new hospital, we're doing what we can to improve healthcare right now, to improve healthcare facilities right now. And so one partnership we've also forged and which is our main area of focus right now is a partnership with a firm called Perkins and Will's. They were selected as our master site planner and they're doing the early concept design for the hospital. So the process of planning out the master site plan as well as the design, it's a very iterative process. This means there's a lot of consultation going on. The Perkins and Will's design team is working hand in hand and constantly consulting with the Ministry of Health and the Minister of Health's team in the Ministry of Health, the management team and staff at the general hospital, the Minister of Infrastructure, his team, the CTO, the advisors in the Ministry of Infrastructure, Grenlec, Nawasa, all are at the table, working with the design and planning team to ensure that we have a product that works for Grenada. And so I'm gonna give you just a quick sneak peek and I'm almost done because I'll be back very soon when we have another update, the next milestone. But I want you to know that in the meantime, things are happening. We're working very hard and we'll be back to show you the results very shortly. So this is your sneak preview. Because I've been talking about the master site plan. And I want you to get a little bit of a visual and an understanding of what is the vision. It's eighty-four acres. The hospital is a footprint, the cornerstone of the medical city will take up maybe ten to twelve. So what's the rest of the eighty-four acres gonna look like? And here's just a little bit of an idea. So what you're looking at the side is the main eastern road. Thank you. You would have just passed Fort Judy, SOG coming up. We're familiar with this area as the Cardi agriculture area. This is the new site and it's eighty-three point nine acres. The hospital will be here. Additional, I can't read this close, medical annex, playing area. Is it a little blurry for you? It'll be better and more is coming, but it'll give you an idea. There's a river that runs through the property. It's barely visible now, it's not beautiful, but it sure will be. We'll beautify it, we'll create an entire city appropriate for wellness, healing, therapeutic. The hospital, additional medical annex. We will have commercial space. St. David's has long wanted additional commercial opportunity space and we'll be able to build it right into the medical city. Up here is area fit, quite appropriate for hotel development. From up here, you can see the sea. We know we have persons that will be coming and loved ones that will need somewhere to stay. So a five-star hotel is one of the areas that we're looking for private investment. Come on, excellent opportunity in Grenada. Over here, we have senior and retirement living. Again, we've been working very hard with our partners, consultants on our plans, on our strategy, the business plan, the marketing, et cetera. We know that we have a great opportunity to enhance Grenada's tourism products through medical tourism. So we'll have retirement community now, very appropriate in a beautiful space, access to world-class healthcare. In this area is a residential area. So we'll have residential staff for staff as well as students. You might start making out some other, and again, this is still very early and we'll be coming back in the next few weeks, by the end of November. We will have some more plans that you can see as we're developing. I'm here also because we want to hear from you. So even as we're going through the process, we're bringing the news. Please ask your questions, send your comments. We'll be working through the architecture and design of the new hospital. Over the next couple of months, as I said, we'll have the high concept of the hospital design and we'll then engage the, the design team to take us into the nitty gritty and continue the process. the design team to take us into the nitty-gritty and continue the process. We will begin the construction next year. And we expect approximately three years of construction, so we will be operating our new hospital by 2029. So that's all I have for you today, just a very brief update. I invite you all to continue with us on the journey. There was a few details there that you could follow along as we continue to issue updates on our Facebook page, on our website. We've got an email address, please feel free to reach out if you have questions, comments, if you want to join the team and contribute, we'd love to hear from you.
And thank you Andrea. Again Andrea, Saint Bernard is our advisor, one of our advisors in the Prime Minister's office, and she is the project sponsor of Project Polaris. Ladies and gentlemen, I invite you now to stand. Stand with me and let's stretch. You've been sitting for about three hours now and I want you to turn to the person next to you and tell them something nice. And I can read lips, so I see some nice things being mouthed. Something nice, right? Did everybody hear something nice? All right, wonderful. Now, give yourselves a round of applause. And I also want you to give the Prime Minister a round of applause because he is our next speaker. And I must tell you, he was getting so excited. He wanted to report everything and he just kept adding to the list and adding to the list. And I could tell you, next month, when we touch down in St. David... All right, things will happen. So ladies and gentlemen, it is my absolute pleasure to welcome at this time our Honorable Prime Minister, the Honorable Deacon Mitchell, to the podium.
Thank you. I will ask you to stay standing for one minute. Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. It's a pleasure to be in St. Andrews, it's a pleasure to be in Deluxe Cinema. I will want to start on a little sober note. I think it's incumbent upon us, having experienced Hurricane Barrel one year ago, and the tremendous regional support that we got in addressing the challenges that was brought on Grenada, Caracu and PT Martinique, for us to stand in solidarity for one minute of silence with our brothers and sisters throughout the Northern Caribbean and to express our condolences or empathy and our support for them because there regrettably has been some loss of life. And I think we want to show our support, so I'll ask for a minute of silence before we get back to the talking. All right, thank you very much. Even the baby complied, so that's... Okay, right, you'll do it now. All right, so it's a pleasure to be in St. Andrew, as I said, and I want to start by recognizing our colleagues on the head table, the St. Andrew Posse. I want to thank them for upbeat, energetic, and very clear accounting session to the people of St. Andrew. I told Minister Andrew I'm giving him the prize for the most improved politician. And I saw someone had a post online saying there'll be a big upset in St. Andrew Southeast. So based on his report, while he did not get the opportunity to represent the majority of St. Andrew Southeast, it is clear that he is doing so even without having secured the mandate as yet. So, St. Andrew, we want to ensure that you have proper representation in all four of But I want to start on the need for us to show our support and rally behind our brothers and sisters in the Northern Caribbean. What we have on the screen here is from the Office of Disaster Preparedness and Emergency Management from Jamaica, the equivalent of OANADMA. And they have sent us a detailed needs list of the support that our brothers and sisters in Jamaica need at this point in time. And by extension, the support is going to be replicated in Cuba, in the Bahamas, and so we need to make sure that we lead in supporting this request. It is a detailed list. We will circulate it wide and far. I have tasked the Director of NADMA to lead the OCS effort to make sure that regionally we can ramp up the supplies that we can gather, we can find the appropriate logistics to help support our brothers and sisters in Jamaica. It is going to be a long and extensive climb back for Jamaica. This was a category five hurricane that went directly over the island. So the damage is going to be enormous and it's only day one since the hurricane passed. They are essentially only now in assessment stage. A lot of the roads are blocked and impassable. Many of the citizens are still cut off. Most of the island is without electricity and Jamaica is a much larger island than Grenada. So if you imagine the devastation that we would have had in St. Patrick and in Caracu and PT Martinique, you have to imagine this a thousand times fold. So it is going to be a major, major challenge and they will certainly need our prayers and our support. I've already asked the Director of NADMA to assess what stocks we have on hand and we will begin the process by ensuring that the stocks that we have in our storeroom and warehouses would be made immediately available to our brothers and sisters in Jamaica. We are also going to discuss at the cabinet level what direct financial support we can provide, as I said, to our brothers and sisters, not only in Jamaica, but in the Bahamas, in Cuba, in Turks and Caicos Islands that have been impacted by this storm. And so when we get the needs list from the other islands, we will be asking the public, the private sector, to help volunteer your time as well as we collect items, as we pack them, and as we ship them off to our brothers and sisters. So it is a very long list, very detailed. We will circulate it on social media, we will put it in the press, we only received it today, and we will ask you to ask our family members in the diaspora as well, particularly in Miami and in Florida because of the closeness to the Northern Islands, to join the relief efforts, to volunteer their time to make sure that we give back generously, given the tremendous support that we received from our brothers and sisters when we went through a difficult time. And we have to remember that we are still dealing with the consequences of Hurricane Barrel here in Grenada still. So we know what it is like and so I expect us to really rally behind our brothers and sisters in Jamaica. Thank you very much. Right, I want to give a brief update on the state of the economy. Can we go to the next slide? The next page? Right. Today, the Minister of Finance, myself, and the team from the Ministry of Finance had a concluding meeting with the International Monetary Fund, the World Bank, representatives from the Caribbean Development Bank, and representatives from the Eastern Caribbean Central Bank. And I want you therefore to join me in, even though the Minister of Finance is not here, in giving a round of applause to the Minister of Finance and his team for the excellent work that they've been doing in managing the finances of Grenada. And so I'm quoting, this is the IMF's publication, and I'm quoting the publication, it is released today, the 29th of October, and the full publication is already been circulated, so you can read it yourself. This is just the first page of the release, and I'm going to read it. It says, "Grenada's economy continues to navigate elevated global uncertainties well in the aftermath of Hurricane Barrel." Well, in the aftermath of Hurricane Barrel. It says, "Economic activity remains robust with strong construction and other domestic sectors helping to offset moderating growth in tourism. Grenada's fiscal position remains comfortable with the proven effectiveness of its post-disaster financing framework and prudent savings of recent citizenship by investment revenues, providing space for continued development priority investments." Some people have been talking about you have a lot of money and where the money and they end spending and they end spending. Well, old people tell you, you have to save for a rainy day. And we need to understand that if you do not save for a rainy day, it is not just rainy days that are coming, it is category five hurricanes that are coming. If we do not save and have buffers and put something aside and feel because you have money, you should spend it, crap will smoke your pipe. So the Minister of Finance and his team have continued to ensure that they manage our finances well. They have continued to ensure that we have buffers in place, that we save, so that when we have the hurricanes, when we have the economic shocks, when we have health disruptions, when you have tariffs and embargoes and geopolitical tensions and war and sanctions, that Grenada will be able to ride through the storm. So it's not simply because you get insurance money that you vet it out and then one year later you broke and you're going back and begging and borrowing money from people. You have to use the money prudently, you have to use it wisely, and you have to ensure that we keep Grenada on a sustainable path. And the Ministry of Finance, the Minister of Finance and his team have done a wonderful job in doing that. So we have to understand, the Minister of Education transferred in excess of over, sorry, the Ministry of Agriculture transferred in excess of over $34 million in cash directly to farmers. Cash, not credit. $34 million, where did this money come from? We didn't get it from the IMF. We didn't borrow it from no bank. It is because we were putting aside things for a rainy day. It is because we were paying for the catastrophic risk insurance to make sure that if a category three or four hurricane hit Grenada, we had the funding necessary to make sure we could take care of persons like farmers and fishermen who would be impacted as a result of the hurricane. You've heard how many houses were built? Where the money coming from to build it? So we need to understand, you hear about the schools, the roads, you see the significant pipeling infrastructure work that is taking place throughout the length and breadth of Grenada. It is because of the careful management by the Ministry of Finance that we are able to ensure that economic activity remains robust, construction remains robust, other domestic sectors remain robust, and that the international community has the confidence in Grenada. That is why the Project Polaris team is well on its way to securing the funding, approximately $250 million US dollars, to build the Project Polaris hospital. So there are a lot of people who always want to talk and talk about the economy. Things are happening. This week, the Minister for Economic Development, the MP for St. Andrew Southwest, brought to parliament, brought to the cabinet the latest employment statistics that shows employment continues to trend downwards, particularly amongst youth. So unemployment, sorry, continues to trend downwards and youth unemployment in particular has dropped significantly. So Minister for Economic Development, please publish the statistics so that the public could see real statistics, not the fake ones. So it's important for us to understand that and for us to take advantage of the opportunities that are there, that are being presented. Construction is a challenge because we cannot find enough construction workers. We cannot find enough skilled construction workers. We have to import workers. So we are required to speak to our young men and women in our community, including women. There is no reason for women not to enter the construction industry. You need operators of heavy equipment, you need painters, you need tailors, you need people to erect windows, we need air-conditioned electrician and plumbing technician. There is no reason why a woman should not be entering the construction workforce as well because the statistics still show that there are higher rates of unemployment amongst our women when compared to our men. So I want to urge all of us in our communities, when, as the Minister for Youth says, we have to go past the days of eat a food and 10-day work and 15-day work. You cannot survive on two weeks of work. There is full-time permanent employment available that allows you to build yourself, build your family, that allows you to secure a pension, that gives you mobility. Right now Jamaica is going to call for a lot of construction workers to help rebuild. If you are skilled, there are opportunities for you to also go and help in some of those areas. So I want us to take advantage of the opportunities we have with a robust economy. You will read the report, it will show you that GDP is expected to grow somewhere around 4.4%. I'm not arguing with them on that, I suspect it will be more, but we will take their projections for the time being. So again, congratulations to the Minister of Finance and his team for the excellent work that they've been doing in managing the fiscal and financial space in the country. Next. Next slide. Right. Go back please, next. You just had it up, good. I was asked on DMs with PMs yesterday, when will the online ED card be coming on stream? This is what the interface would look like. I have indicated to the Customs and Immigration Department that as of the 1st of December, I want this to go live. They told me two weeks, I'm giving them four weeks because people always say in two weeks because they figure, well, you're the Prime Minister and you don't want to hear bad news. So we've given them two extra weeks and as of the 1st of December, we expect that when people come in to Grenada, they will be able to do the ED card online. I'm sure perhaps you can navigate it. You see flight information, what do you need? Flight information, passport pages, a copy of the travel document, an email address. If you click on the get started, let's see what happens. Right, so this is just an interface. Yes, click it, let's see if it's working. You have internet, it's loading. Port vessel information, so you see, you start filling up arrival, next, you could do a fake name and... Right, so you see airline, flight number, country of destination, port of embarkation, intended date of arrival. All right, so we intend that by the 1st of December, we will have this moving online and we intend to build upon that to get us to the point where eventually we don't need an ED card online at all and that people can walk in, use the passports and be able to get... So we've already commenced the discussion on advanced passenger systems that allow you, as happens in the United States, to simply walk in, you get scanned, your biometrics are taken, and you go about your business. All right, so if we can go to the next slide? Right, so I will speak a little bit about the state of our infrastructure. It's probably not readable there, so I will go from my laptop and provide some context. I will first start with the Cliff Road project. Now, as you are aware, this project has been going on for quite a while. The time for completion has already passed, but that's not surprising given the obvious delays that were taking place on the project. We have gotten an assurance from the contractor that they will do... that they will do everything to ensure that by the end of December, the road is motorable and traffic can pass through. The major retaining walls have been completed because the road was such that you had a number of houses on the bottom side of the road, and the road itself was collapsing. So what the project entailed was to cut into the cliff side, to widen and straighten the road, and to build retaining walls on the southern or bottom part of the road to ensure that we can protect the houses and protect the road from continuing to collapse like the sort of situation we had in Molina. Bearing in mind that we have a lot of 20 and 40-foot containers that are coming up the eastern coast from the port. So we wanted to make sure that we can build the road in a manner that would widen the road, improve the line of sight, and create a sidewalk. Because on some of these hairpin corners, we want to make sure that people are on the curb or on the sidewalk and not walking in the road to improve their safety. The road design also includes the creation of a roundabout at the southern part of the road, that's the intersection between springs, woodlands area, so that when you're coming from springs, you would actually have a roundabout. Because what was there was a bit of a T-junction that oftentimes caused a lot of challenges. And because of the 40 and 20-foot containers not being able to go, oftentimes they will go straight. So we have to be able to address that, and significant widening of the four-lane intersection at the top of road. That's the Calvini Main Road, the Woban Main Road, the Cliff Springs part, and the Monjulu part. So if you go now, you would see that work has ramped up significantly. The widening at the entrance to the Cliff Monjulu area is taking place. The construction of the roundabout at the bottom side is taking place. Most of the retaining walls have been completed, and we are now backfilling and compacting. And so we expect that this will become motorable. Part of the project as well also includes the relaying of the Nowasa pipes at the same time as well, given the extensive pipe relaying projects that are taking place throughout the length and breadth of Grenada. Now, we intend to embark upon major road projects commencing 2026, starting from the Morris Bishop International Airport, all the way up to the Woodlands Main Road. So that's project one. Then from the cliff to Westall Point itself, the resurfacing of the entire main road, that's package two. Then from Tempe to the Monkuma Junction. So the entire Bolio Road needs a complete overhaul. It is a road that is heavily trafficked, there are significant drains, some parts are very narrow, and it is a densely residential neighborhood. So for the MP for St. George, northeast, rest assured, sir, that we are working on it. We also intend to address the Old West Hall to St. Paul's Main Road. That road is very narrow, some parts of the area experience significant rainfall. And again, it is a highly residential community and a major bypass road between the St. Paul's Main Road and the Eastern Main Road, so we intend to address it. In St. John, we intend to address the Mabuya landslide that has laid like this for the last 20 or maybe 30 years. We cannot always, from St. George's to Gavve, have to take a detour. We have to be able to travel on the main western road without going into a small road, going into Monk Martz, or going into Monk Nesbit and Monk Granby, and so on. So the Mabuya piece of that road is a major part that we will do. And obviously, the Grandan's Main Road is one that we will do. Now, we are fully cognizant of the inconvenience that road users are experiencing with the pipeline projects. But I want to urge our road users or motorists to appreciate that this Nowasa project is a major infrastructure project to improve water storage, water distribution throughout the length and breadth of Grenada. This is the first time in 100 years that this kind of infrastructure, water improvement project, is taking place throughout the length and breadth of Grenada. this doesn't happen, this doesn't happen often. And so the little inconvenience that we are asking, we need to make sure that we are patient on the road. We need to make sure that we have empathy and consideration for other road users, and the road will be improved. The pipes have to be pressure-tested, we cannot simply go back and resurface the road. And in any event, certainly in the case of the Grandan's Main Road and the Morris Bishop Main Road, the entire road has to be redone. It makes no sense in going back to just patch the little pieces that have been erected. The surface of the roads have significantly eroded, and they need to be completely redone. So it does mean as well that in 2026, and perhaps beyond, that for a sustained period, that there will be major disruptions to traffic because of the need to completely resurface the roads, to fix the culverts, the drains, to address the areas where the roads are slipping, to build retaining walls, and to build sidewalks in every area where a sidewalk could be taken. Because part of the challenge we face now is that our roads are narrow, many of the areas do not have sidewalks, we have a lot of vehicular traffic, we have huge trucks, we have 40 and 20-foot trailer trucks, and then we have a lot of people parking in the road, which creates a lot of congestion and increased risk for persons. I just want to emphasize, these projects are all going to cost hundreds of millions of dollars. And so we are looking at a creative approach to how we fund these projects. We have indicated that we want contractors who are able to design, finance, build, and critically maintain the roads. One of the problems we have here is that we virtually have no road maintenance, outside of the ad hoc approach that we inherited at the Ministry of Infrastructure. So it means the contractors are going to have to have the ability to build the roads and then get paid. That's what design, build, and finance means. They have to get their own financing, construct the road, when the road is finished, then the government will pay. So we've made and put out calls for expression of interest. We have three companies that have responded thus far, Namalco Construction, Calco Limited, and Construction and Industrial Equipment Limited. We are reviewing the responses that they've provided. We anticipate that in the next month or two, we will get to the point where we have procurement approval from the procurement board, with the view to starting in January. I want to emphasize this. Road construction is major construction. It requires a significant amount of aggregates, stone, gravel, base course material, bitumen. Grenada currently has one quarry operating. It is why we are going to have to reactivate the Telescope Quarry. So currently gravel and concrete is in negotiations with a firm from India to do a joint partnership to reactivate the quarry. The social and environmental impact for the residents of Telescope, that is at the forefront. And so all measures will be taken to mitigate the impact of the operations of the quarry. But we simply cannot repair the roads without the gravel, without the stone, without the aggregates. We don't have no choice. Similarly, for the residents of St. John, we cannot do heavy construction without asphalt plants, without concrete plants. There is a cost to development. We will do everything to ensure that the contractors and so on mitigate any potential environmental impacts as a result of these plants. But there is no way in which you can build a road and not have aggregates. And to some extent, we are probably going to have to import aggregates just to meet the demand that we have. And there's a huge demand for aggregates throughout the region. Jamaica is probably going to be eating up a lot in light of what has happened with Hurricane Melissa. Guyana is on a massive development drive in light of their discovery of oil and gas. And so we have to appreciate that there will be some inconvenience, and there are always inconveniences to development, but we have no choice. We'll do everything we can to mitigate the process. So I want to conclude by speaking about Cloje. Now, if we can go back to the first part of the slide, because I want to narrate right. No, there should be one with Cloje alone. Right. So for the residents of Cloje, because you see, sometimes you see it's the democratization of opinions and views that social media allows. So every and anybody could say anything, anywhere, anytime. Construction requires people who know what they're doing. It requires trained people, it requires engineers, it requires architects, it requires contractors. I am neither of these. The prominent secretary in the Ministry of Infrastructure is not one. We have technical staff at the Ministry of Infrastructure, and even the technical staff oftentimes need the support of private technical staff to do this. The Cloje site, not just the road, all of Cloje, is a highly unstable area. If you walk Cloje, you will see significant cracks all over Cloje. Underneath people's homes, in the roadway, on the verges in agricultural land. Those are the facts, and the residents of Cloje know that. I can't tell you why that is the case. It requires geotechnical people to tell us why that is the case, and what measures we need to take when people are constructing, and in our case, when we are repairing the roads, to be able to address it. So a contract was given to a contractor to do a 64-feet retaining wall in an area where the road was beginning to deteriorate. It included drainage and a cross culvert. After the work commenced, after the work commenced and after the excavation started and the wall started being built, underground water springs were discovered. That together with a burst pipe from Nowasa further destabilized what is already an inherently unstable geographical area. And therefore, there was a significant collapse of not just the road, but the entire area. And there was a house very close to where the retaining wall was located, where there was significant deterioration at that area. The ministry did not have the in-house technical competence to advise on what should be the remedial solution. So Mr. Timothy Bobb, who is a private engineer, civil engineer, as well as Dr. Derek Gay, who's from Trinidad and Tobago, and all of the most well-known and reputed engineers around, and who helped us design the Molina Bridge to address the Molina situation, were retained. And they provided two potential options for stabilizing and fixing the situation. So the team would have had to review those issues. One of the options included now having to build a 16-feet-high retaining wall. After extensive internal dialogue, the two options were contemplated. Option one is to try and reinstate the road to the level it was, or option two, lower the overall road level. Right? After the retaining wall was done, and you have to understand things about construction, you have to constantly observe what is happening. After the retaining wall was done, the team further reviewed it, and it has been recommended that the best option is to, instead of trying to build back the road to the height it was, is to try and lower the level of the road overall. So there would have had to be a pause in the work for that assessment to continue, and for that assessment to be made before determining how to proceed. Because if the best recommendation is to lower the level of the road, it makes no sense to continue building the wall all the way up. So that is what has been done, so the geometrical design has to happen. And people have to understand, these things take time, you have to do load calculations, you have to do this, you have to do that. The technical people have to do their work before they can provide us with the necessary guidance. Gabion Basket Wall has to be built, the new road has to be reconstructed, and the completion of the drainage features have to take place. The expected completion date is March of 2026. And we also have to appreciate that after the road destabilized, there was significant and incessant rainfall that happened. You can't do construction work, you certainly can't do concrete work when you have rainfall. And don't underestimate what mud is sometimes. A lot of the equipment gets stick, they can't move, the trucks can't move. So all of that would have been part of the challenge. So the projected completion date is March, and the revised projected completion cost is now $1.6 million. So I want to assure the residents of Cloje that what people say is not fair to them. No one created the situation, it is nature. It was not fair to the residents of Molina either. They endured almost three years of complete inconvenience, in fact, everybody of the west coast. Right? So when nature happens, when the hurricane hit Karakuan Piti Matne, more than it hit Grenada, it was not fair to them. But it's not any human beings doing. And so the government has committed as much as possible to mitigating the consequences. But in those circumstances, there will be inconvenience. So all we are asking is for you to appreciate that we're doing everything we can to as quickly as possible address the situation. And this is not unique, there are examples of this all over Grenada. Bridges, areas that are falling off, either into precipice or ravine. And this is the challenge of a small island, of a volcanic island, of a mountainous terrain island, and of an island that is susceptible to significant climatic challenges. We don't have the oil and gas yet, and the resources from it to put us in a position where we have a lot of resources to spend on shoring up our infrastructure. Right? But we are working on getting the oil and gas, and you had an update, I think at the last town hall, on this. So we will be pursuing this very robustly, because as I said, we owe it to the next generation of Grenadians to try and make sure that we can, if there are commercial quantities of oil and gas, we can exploit this for the benefit of Grenadians. So if we can go to the next slide, I'm mindful of the fact that I want to have a question and answer, so you could ask the St. Andrew posse, all your questions. And you could save my questions for when we get to St. David's. But we're in St. David's. So for the people of St. David, because everybody talks about their constituency. And so I have to put a little plug for St. David's there. So what is on the screen here is the Lastages Natural Works vending booths that we intend to construct in 2026 at a natural works site. Now, this will be a completely new building, separate and apart from the existing historical buildings that are there. We intend to preserve the historical buildings and to renovate and repair them. Could we go to the next slides all the way to the end? I'll come back. Right, so, right, there we go. So these are the historic relics that currently exist on Lastages Natural Works. And there are many of these throughout the length and breadth of Grenada. We have to preserve our built history. We have to let young Grenadians know that their ancestors worked, built, and created these things. And that a lot of it comes from the plantation era, it comes from the slavery era. And they have to understand that as painful as it is, our ancestors worked and built those things. And so when we preserve them, we are preserving them because we want to show the strength of our ancestors, and their willingness and ability to overcome the odds and to build beautiful things that even with the technology today, we can't build. So we are going to be preserving all of this, if we can go to the next... You have to go back one note, so you see all of these things. Young people need to be able to see those things. Because if not, they will think the world is just concrete and glass. Right? And we need to be able to tell the story of what went on, what was made and how it was made in those things. So we are working right now on restoring the fort in St. George's. There is a Spanish team of consultants who have made a proposal to us, which we are considering, to assist us with restoring all of our historical sites like this. So there's a specific proposal for this site. There is also a proposal from the government of Egypt, because Egypt, as you know, is perhaps the land of historical artifacts. And so they have enormous expertise in this, including from starting with the restoration of the Governor General's House to many of our historic buildings and historical artifacts. So we'll be considering both proposals, we are probably going to have to work with both of them, because there's a lot of this, there's a huge site at Granbury Estate, which again needs preserving. So there's enough, there's in St. Mark, St. John, all over the place. And when tourists come to Ireland, after two days at the hotel, they want to see the island. They need to know our story or history. Right? And the best way of telling that is by preserving those things. So we will preserve that aspect for cultural, artistic tourism. And we will build vending booths, so if you can go back to the start, right? Right, so this is, next slide, right? So what you're looking at is the current layout of, or a projected layout of natural works. The building... This is the footprint for the original building, which is a historic one. And then the one further down is the proposed new building. So the proposal is that we have an entry and an exit. Currently, you could only enter from one part. And we will build a two-story building that will house booths, that will allow vendors and so on to be able to place, to be placed there and to be able to market and sell their goods, their craft, and what have you. Could we go to the next slide? So this is just the actual drawing for it, it's a horseshoe, next. This is just a schematic of what they would look like, next. You see the entire building, next. This is just the artist's impression of what we are dealing with. And I'm emphasizing this, because I am going to be clear on this. We cannot continue the situation where people just simply go on the side of the road and vend. Now, we fully appreciate and we want to support our small businesses and our vendors, which is why we recognize that we have to invest in the infrastructure and provide them with a place. and provide them with a place to be able to vend. But once we do so, it will be a zero-tolerance policy to roadside vending. Right? We cannot continue with this situation for a number of reasons which I would not get into today. So, Lastsages Natural Works, the next stage for this would be to have the bills of quantities updated so that we know what is projected the cost. We will then tender, meaning we will ask contractors to bid for the job. A contractor or contractors will be selected. And then we hope come January, we will be in a position to start the project. The anticipated timeframe would be twelve months. And by then, we would obviously be in a position to open it and have vendors and so on come in and start to occupy it. Bearing in mind that there's significant tourism development taking place. And we want, when the tourists come out of the hotel, there's a place for them to come. We want local citizens to be able to go to the market and to be able to find a place where they can congregate and sell, and that vendors don't have to put themselves at risk by going and standing up on the side of the road to sell their products in case buses or trucks or anything like that get away and knock them out. Next slide, as in move off from this next topic, thank you. Right, tomorrow, the 30th of October. This is self-explanatory. But I think it's important to highlight it since we're in Saint Andrew. I will see the home of cricket in Grenada. So, we will be distributing a thousand cricket kits throughout the length and breadth of Grenada, starting tomorrow. We will start with our schools. These cricket kits were donated by Mr. Dangotti at hundreds of thousands of dollars. They don't play cricket in Nigeria, right? But because of his friendship and because of his association with Grenada and his desire to see young men and women in Grenada, and this is important, the cricket kits are both for male and females, right? Cricket is a sport that is one of the fastest-growing sports internationally. There is enormous opportunities for young men and women to have a career in cricket, regardless of whether they're playing for the West Indies. Andrew Fletcher, he's playing for the West Indies, and he's off today, I think, to continue playing. Andrew is almost forty years old. He's fit as a fiddle, and he's playing international professional cricket and getting paid in US dollars. That is his career. Afy Fletcher, almost forty, and she's still playing cricket. Fit as a fiddle. So, I'm making this point for us to appreciate. Bangladesh has a cricket league. India has the biggest cricket league. England, Australia, New Zealand, we have the Caribbean Premier League, right? There's cricket in Canada, there's cricket in America. The World Cup was hosted in America. There is enormous opportunity. So, please, parents, we are lighting up all of the playing fields and the pastures. We are doing so so that there are opportunities for you. Don't send the children, go with them. You have no excuse now. You come from work, you could do the dinner, you can shower and go with the kids and the grandkids, six to nine, the lights are on. Encourage them, get fit yourself with them. Tell them about the days of Vivian Richards Michael holding the pride at Rockwell's so that we can inspire them to aspire Junior Murray, Roy Lewis, so that we can inspire them to once again aim for the heights that will bring cricket, which is not just a game. For black people, the ascendancy of the West Indies cricket team in cricket signal to us that we could ascend to anything we put our minds to at a time when we are coming out of colonization and seeking our independence and trying to chart our way forward. That is why cricket is so important for us from a legacy point of view, that we understand that. And that is why we are investing in our young men and women by making sure we can give them the toolkits that they need to be able to make sure that they have an opportunity to have a career in cricket. And it's not just cricket. Roy Lewis is the manager of the West Indies cricket team. How many of you know that? He's the manager of the West Indies cricket team. So, it's not just cricket. It's an opportunity to be a coach, to be a physiotherapist, to be a manager, right? So, all there are enormous opportunities in cricket. Final slide? Yes, that's why we travel. They say I'm visiting Grenada, it's a lovely place to visit. You mightn't be able to read it, but I'm going to read it because you see, these are highlights of our campaign. And on the right, it says, "Let's move Grenada forward." And you heard that a lot of things are happening, that if we list them out, we will stay here until 3:00 AM in the morning. But I think it's important for us to reemphasize, you need to go to left, yes, reemphasize that things have happened, things are happening, and more things, 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 things will happen. So, let's start right at the top. You see, that's what the accountability session is, that's what the school card is. First one was the payment of our pension. Payment of pension, things happen. Things are happening, and things will continue to happen. You see, there's a certain person who went and said that they were forced out of the police force. They didn't tell you that they're going with a pension. They didn't tell you about the hundreds of thousands of dollars that they're going home with. So, things are happening for them too. First thing's happening. The twice-monthly payments, things happen. Let's go up. The national minimum wage, things happen. Constructing the modern hospital, things are. Introducing a national health insurance scheme and fund. Construction of 500 quality Grenada-style homes. Go up in Dunfmlin, they're coming soon. They will be open for you to walk and see the quality and the kind of homes that are being constructed there. And I want to emphasize that. You see, oftentimes, people only want good for themselves. Them alone should live in nice house. Them alone should drive nice car. Them alone should have driver. But when you say construct quality bathrooms and toilets like the Wash program, or construct proper homes like the Project 500 in Dunfmlin, what do they have to say? They have anything to say? Things are happening. Free education up to Tamsisi, you heard the minister, education. So, you see, I heard the minister say elections might be in 2027. On that track record, it's twenty-one days to give notice of election. I don't want to forget Karaku and Piti Matnik. Facilitate reliable and cost-effective travel between Grenada and Karaku. You ain't hear nobody from Karaku and Piti Matnik complaining that they can't travel. We are subsidizing the cost of the aircraft to make sure that our brothers and sisters can travel to and from Karaku. Right? The night landing, we're working on it. If it wasn't for Hurricane Barry, the night landing would have been completed already. Free wireless internet access. You can go to all of the community centers that have been repaired, built, or renovated. And as members of the community, if you don't have access to internet at your home, you have access to internet there. We have done the jump program with Flow that has provided internet access to underprivileged homes at a cost of $20 and a laptop. Hundreds of homes have benefited from this project. This was a proposal made to the prior administration for years, and they did nothing about it. $20 for internet. Well, you just saw the minister, Utenspu, talking about the money program, so I don't have to talk about that. The manis themselves benefited from the increase in the minimum wage because we said you can't be a trainee for life. So, things are happening. We're working on the local government in Karaku and Piti Matnik. In fact, we need local government throughout the parishes in Grenada. It is something that we must do because if not, all of them kill the MPs. It's one MP and two or three staff. They can't address all of the needs. So, and the reason we need the local government is so that we can train people in leadership before they get to a national level. It would be an opportunity for you to prove yourself as a councilman, or alderman, or mayor, whatever the term is, at your parish level so that you have the training in public policy, the training in how to deal with the public, how to deal with difficult situations, how to deal with disaster preparedness and management, how to deal with leadership. The challenge we have, it is a challenge. All of us here, except for Sister Delma, we're never in government. No public experience. But because of our deep commitment to Grenada, we realize the rescue mission that they're talking about and the parachuting happened in 2022. We parachuted and we rescued Grenada. And we are going to stay the course to make sure that we continue to develop and build Grenada. You know what it used to say? We go down the seed program. We go fire the traffic wardens. Instead of that, the traffic wardens are secure and comfortable. When I met with them, this is not a joke. At the end, one young lady, very emotional, said to me, "Thank you." And I said, "For what?" She said, "For not firing us." I said, "Where you get this from?" They were told that. They were told that, the intimidation. What do you call it, Chinese Hill? When I went up to Chinese Hill before the election, that is the kind of comments you were getting from people. You will fire all Lee money. You done the seed program. We didn't, the seed program probably have more people on it now than when we started. There was an increase by $150 to persons who were sixty and over and to persons who were disabled. But they won't talk about that. So, we have, in fact, ensured, look at this, paying our sportsmen and women. You were in Lastsages when Lyndon and the team touched on, when they were presented with their checks. So, we are making good, not just Lyndon and the team, the swimmers. We even gave a token of appreciation to our doctor who went to the Olympics, the first Grenadian doctor to represent us at the Olympics. The coaches establishing a cannabis industry. Brothers and sisters, we are going to be taking the bill to Parliament shortly. We are in a stage, and we hope that within a week, that the final draft of the bill will be presented to the public for debate, scrutiny, and extensive discussion. It has taken a while because even within the cabinet, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of debate, as you would naturally understand on a topic like this. But the draft bill is almost complete. We will be circulating it far and wide for discussion, and then we will take it to Parliament for debate and for passage. Establishing a cultural and creative economy. Well, the Office of the Creative Affairs has been created, and they have done significant work there. Many of you don't know, but a lot of persons were given an opportunity to improve their vocal range, their singing, investment in some of the studios that are producing the calypso music and so on. So, when you see the great music that took place for Carnival, it's not by accident. It is because we are supporting our creatives, right? They have grants at GDB, they have soft loans at GDB, courses are being taught at Tamsisi. The Attorney General is here. We are working with Waipo to strengthen intellectual property and to protect our artists and other cultural persons. Vaughn has been made a cultural ambassador in association with Waipo. So, we are not just, we are in discussions with some of our brothers and sisters in Ghana and in Nigeria to bring their sewing talents to Grenada so that all them suit, all you like to see mean, we could start producing some of them in Grenada. So, this is the summary page in our manifesto. Page four, five, or six. Let me see, page ten and eleven. So, you can go back and take the manifesto. You could do your own accounting about whether or not we have moved Grenada forward. And if you're satisfied that we moved Grenada forward, then tell me call it in twenty-one days. Good night, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm hearing a lot of ringing in the room. I'm not sure where that ringing sound is coming from. And I'm hearing some ringing sounds in the room this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, that was our Prime Minister, the Honorable Deacon Mitchell. He gets fired up in the evening. This is, he's a night person, so you can tell, right? So, we might be going for another couple hours. And we're in Granville, and I know Granville people. I know you guys have a lot of questions to ask, and now is the time. We will, again, I want to remind you that, you know, just to give everyone an opportunity, or most people an opportunity, to share their concerns and ask questions. We are going to limit you to one question this evening. So, if you have a question at this time, we have two microphones in the hall. There's one at the front, and there should be one in the middle of the hall. You can step up to the mic and you can ask a question at this time. If you do not have a question, that's okay. That's okay. And I know that ministers, they were very thorough. So, you may not have a question, and that is also okay, right? So, if you do have a question at this time, we'll take them one by one. My apologies, it's just one mic this evening, so you can step forward and ask your question. Proceed. Good evening. Senator David Andrew. Tamsisi. Okay, school has resumed. But there are some of the students that have not gotten their t-shirt, t-shirt as yet, and has been paid for. My grandson is one of them. But I'm speaking on behalf of those of the students that paid for their shirt and have not received it as yet. And asked and was told by one of the teachers, if they don't have the t-shirt, they're not allowed to come to class. So, that's second part. I don't know if it's true, but, you know, just kind of throwing that out. Do you know when it's going to be?
All right, thank you. Unfortunately, I'm not aware. I can't give you timelines as to when it's likely to be. In fact, that's probably a routine administrative matter that the college administration will take care of. I anticipate it probably could be shortages in supply, I don't know. But if it is a shortage in supply, I don't anticipate that they will debar the students from getting their tutelage. So, but I could always speak with the Chair of Council just to get a better sense of what it is. But it's not something that we would ordinarily be involved in because that is routinely administrative. But thank you.
Proceed.
Good evening. My name is Lydia Francis. It's not a question, but I'm just making an introduction. Prime Minister, good evening. Good evening, Prime Minister. I don't know if you remember seeing me and waving for me and bringing down your glasses and hello and hi, wherever. I love you. Now, I am only introducing myself. My name is Lydia Francis. I am from Manjulu, Saint Georges. I'm a seventy-year-old woman at this moment. And I am new in the area. I am only six months, and I live at Subies. Now that I've heard, meanwhile, I'm here, I heard about Mr. Toz. But I would like to, if I could get a number, that I can call you and I would like to have a chat with you at some time. Please, okay? That's all. And we love each other. I am new, I said, I support. And I always get my wave. You meet me at Lastsages, you wave me. You meet me at Woodlands, you wave me. You reach at Saint Georges. And not only, and not only waving for me, but he will have his security load up his glass, and I will give him what I have for him.
Thank you.
That's what I have.
Thank you, Ms. Lydia.
So, I want to get in touch.
Yes, at the end of the meeting, we'll give you the number for the office. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. My name is Jalen Alexander, and tonight I have not a question, but just a suggestion. So, Mr. PM, it ties back to the last slide in your presentation. So, in my opinion, I believe we could benefit from a more proactive PR team. At the moment, our public engagement feels a little bit too relaxed. So, I believe we should be sharing our major accomplishments more frequently, perhaps weekly, to remind the public of our progress and to ensure our message stays strong and to ensure that the opposition stays where they belong out of the picture. So, you know, when you see a cockroach, and it hit it for the first time, and it hit it five and six times to make sure it dead. We had to hit it five and six times to make sure they... Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander, for your suggestion, and we will... Thank you, Mr. Alexander, for your suggestion and we will indeed take it to heart.
Let me say a special good night to the Prime Minister and the head table, ministers and everyone else inside here. I have something important to say. Sometimes it may, may be important as well as it is not. I didn't hear you mention anything about the Americans and the base to come here. Because I am hearing talk on the street, I drive bus, that we are losing our tourist sector workers in the south because of the base the Americans want to build here. Not the base, the, the thing they want, they want to put up on, on our airport. But I am indeed saying to you, Mr. Prime Minister, think about it carefully, you and your colleagues. Don't fall into that trap. Let us say a prayer deep in our hearts for Venezuela, Prime President and his people. Let us stay focused and stand with them and don't give the Americans no authority. Because I think giving them the authority, you will be setting a trap for yourself and you will be the next victim of the Americans. Don't. Don't. Because if, if you check it out, the hurricane has passed on the vicinity Jamaica. I wonder if you hear anything about Donald Trump or his cabinet says anything about that? I didn't hear any. If you heard, tell me. But I'm asking you, don't fall into that trap with the Americans.
All right.
Let us stand firm with Venezuela, although our friend Ken Jones is saying that we don't get nothing from Venezuela, we don't get nothing from China. We people don't go to China and walk and send back nothing here. We don't go to Venezuela and send back nothing, but we get significantly from these two countries. These two countries look out for us, not America. Let us stay focused where we are, as Ralph Gonzales said, any decision you take, they will stand with you. And I think we all inside here are foot soldiers of the party. You are, you are the one leading. If you say yes, I will stand with you. You say no, I will stand with you. I will stay focused and stand as a N D C writer. I would not fall, I would not go astray. But I'm saying, stay focused and don't give the Americans no authority to set up nothing here.
Thank you so much. Before Prime Minister responds, I'd like to urge the audience, let's be respectful of everyone at the mic. Let's be respectful. Thank you. Prime Minister, do you wish to respond?
Sorry, thank you. So yes, you, you said think about it and that's what we're doing. So I, I didn't think it appropriate to address the matter, the tongue all simply because I'd indicated that I was going to make a statement in Parliament and obviously that opportunity didn't happen on Tuesday, yesterday. Parliament should be sitting, all things being equal, next Tuesday. And I will do so because at least it will be on, on the record. But I think since you've, you've raised a question and it's a tongue all and you deserve a response, that's precisely what the release from the Ministry of Foreign Affairs indicated, that the requests have been made, that we are considering the requests and that we're still in the process of, of doing so. But I want to emphasize a couple of things. One, Grenada has always had cooperation with the United States of America in matters pertaining to narcotics and the transshipment and the trade of narcotics, drugs, criminal activity, the trade in firearms, etc. This cooperation continues and will continue. And even as part of the request for the installation of the radar, other requests were made, which we already agreed to, pursuant to our cooperation in relation to the narcotics trade. It is simply because I am aware and the Cabinet is aware that the radar request would do exactly what would have happened here, which is to evoke significant debate, significant discussion, significant emotive reactions because of the nature of the requests and the place that it is requested to, to, to happen, that we are taking our time first to be able to address the technical challenges that it poses because our airport is a civilian airport. Second, Grenada doesn't have a military. So we don't ordinarily have military cooperation. What we have is law enforcement and national security cooperation to deal with crime. And third, the request will, of necessity, disrupt operations at the airport. And so all of those issues have to be understood and, and, and understood clearly. So while the concept is clear, just like in construction, the technical stuff is for technical people. And until those technical investigations are complete, we're not in a position to answer something you don't know what the impact are. So when we say we are considering the request, we actually need the time to do all those things. We have to appreciate our airport is regulated by ECHA. ECHA is the Eastern Caribbean Civil Aviation Authority. We have one civil aviation authority for the entire region that regulates all of the airports in the region. So you would see, for example, that these air passenger bridges that were built, those bridges that go straight to the plane and you can walk from the plane in. They haven't been opened yet. You know, one of the reasons why is because ECHA hasn't approved them. Because we have to have things like a, a new security plan, because you're no longer coming off. Are there other things? You have to have containment areas, all of those things. So until ECHA gives us the final go-ahead and the training is done and the security is in place, even if it's our airport and even if they've been built at considerable cost, we have not been able to start using them yet. So, when you're part of a regional mechanism, such as the court, the, the central bank, the regulatory authority for civil airports, we can't just on our own go and do what we want because we would be in breach of a lot of the regulations. Those regulations will in fact impact our ability for planes to land and planes to leave. And the presence of any such thing like a radar would, would, would have, those things also have to be factored in and we have to get the go-ahead from, from ECHA. So that's what we're doing. And then finally, importantly, obviously the views of the people matter and everyone has been airing their views. I think we can see quite categorically, there's been perhaps more debate about this matter than I think any other matter that has come across in recent times on any other national policy issues. And so we're happy with people having the opportunity to share their views, some are for, some are against, some are indifferent. And all of those things will be factored in if we get to the point where a decision needs to be made. But it's important for us to emphasize that from a law enforcement cooperation point of view. It is not just the United States because it's the United States and all of our regional partners. We are part of a number of regional security apparatus, the Regional Security Services Treaty, which actually was first, was essentially formed and first deployed in Grenada back in nineteen eighty-three. Right? We are part of this. We are part of what is called the J R C C, which does a lot of intelligence gathering and sharing. We are part of a gun crime intelligence unit that is part of, of cooperation with the United States because most of the guns come to the region and manufactured in and come from the United States. Right? And we have to deal with, with those things. We have extradition arrangements in place where if you need to extradite someone from Grenada to America or from America to Grenada. All of this is part of the, the, the international framework and human rights framework that we, we have. So I appreciate the motive responses and emotions because we are dealing with the Maurice Bishop International Airport. We all knew what, what the history of the airport, we all know what happened there. But we, before we get to the emotions, we have to deal with the technical stuff first. If we can't get past that, then the emotions probably will never be triggered because we've not been in a position to say yes or no as the case may be. And so yes, that is the context in which we, we, we have been having the discussions. And countries make requests all the time. Sometimes the request agreed to, sometimes they're not agreed, sometimes events overtake the request and we move on. So I don't, life goes on as you can see, and there are lots of things we need to do. So I don't want us to let a single request for a radar airport engulf all our emotions and oxygen, right? The country isn't going to grind to a halt. We have to continue working and building and building the country. So what I've said, I guess I'm, essentially what I'm saying no is what I'm going to be repeating in, in, in Parliament. That is the, the state at which we are. Many people have asked, for example, whether we should speak to the opposition on the matter, whether we should give them information. To some extent, we have not given them information yet because some of the questions that we've asked have not been answered completely. And if we were to give them information, it will be disingenuous to just say to them, well, this is the request that was made and not give them all of the work that we've done, the questions we've asked, the answers we've had to the questions so that they're actually properly briefed as to what, what has been, been made. So until we get to that stage, we will not present half-baked or, or incomplete summary to them of, of especially the technical information so that they could properly form an opinion on the, the matter as well. So that's where it is and I hope therefore, by giving this long answer, anyone who had questions or concerns about that would accept this response as a response to whatever questions you may have about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Prime Minister, for your response. And now we take the question from the lady in the yellow.
Yeah. I come to say something, eh? Because he, he has some people in Bylan. Delma know them. Paul and Tracy, Paul and Tracy and then wait, listen. Paul and Tracy take me for, Paul and Tracy and Nikki. They're living in Kaisama, eh? But they had a dress up placing in Grenada. They take me to be members of N D C, them is members N D C. But me and them is friends. Three of them is friends, mother and daughter, they take me to be N D C. But he has some N D C up in Bylan and Front Street. Everything they want and Zafar orders and they know I have five children for Ben in Bylan. They're too greedy, they have already, they have tips and money already. They have things and money. Ben picked me up in Granville, five children have for him and they know how to bring them. They have every day and me and Ben children does not every day.
Okay.
Bylan woman and them too wicked and man.
All right.
Every day, that's why. They don't see trouble, but they have every day. Have a girl in the world.
All right, so I, I, I think the question is to, you need assistance, so at the end of the meeting, we'll engage you. Minister Thomas, we'll have a conversation with you for some assistance at the end of the meeting.
Bylan people, not them alone what is N D C, but a bad beg, but they have money.
All right.
Bad beg and Zafar me and Ben stay with us for the children and they know we does not every day.
All right. All right, thank you so much. Again, Minister Delma Thomas will assist first with conversation at the end of the meeting. So thank you so much. Again, I want to appeal to the audience, you know, just, just show some respect when the speaker is speaking.
Okay. One, I only have one question, one suggestion. Question, Minister Thomas, Delma Thomas. We had two incidents within the past two months as a Granville resident, a telescope girl. My concern is somebody for, uh, somebody who, who we say have a mental problem ran into the G C L the other day and create chaos. Now that could have caused a serious issue. And just recently, we saw one of them run into K F C and fill his belly. I want to know what is happening when it comes to the updates for the drug abuse center. We need something happening when it comes to that. Now, I'm putting on the other hat. I, I'm just gonna just give my suggestion and done with it because I don't want to stay too long. This is very close to me. And not just, this is not just for the ministers, but for Prime Ministers as well. No. Persons with disability are often left behind and I am very, I must say first that I am enthusiasm with the development of the disability policy. You guys have been doing great when it comes to that and including persons with disability in gathering information for that policy. But we are still behind time. Like even tonight. We, persons from the deaf community are left out. They don't know what is happening. You're communicating to us, but they don't understand what you are saying. And they vote, they too are in Grenada, they want to know what is happening. And it's not just government information service or, or what is happening in governments, but all our media entities, including the one I working. It's honest, we just don't include persons in our community, the deaf community, and that needs to be, to change. You need to include them every time. Don't forget them. Now, when it comes to education, we talk about moving, using education to go when it comes to poverty. And I'm just saying that our educational system does not cater for persons with disability beyond secondary school. There is no facility tertiary that gives us anything like Braille or interpreters that can teach them. So how we want them to improve if we don't have the facility locally, because a lot of them can't even afford to travel. So the facilities locally, I'm hoping that we can change that. This is very important. And finally, opportunities. We need to fix the opportunities for persons with disability, those of us who would have broken the barriers and gotten our education. The workplace are not hiring us. They like the paper, they like the C V's, but they, from the time they see us in the interviews, that's it. And I'm saying us because I've experienced it. I may be in a better place now, but there are persons out there who have the bachelor's or getting the bachelor's and they don't have no idea what's happening for them. So that is the issue that I have.
Thank you, Rena. And your suggestion for translation for deaf is noted. Minister Delma will also respond to your comments.
Testing. So as it relates to the drug rehabilitation center, which should be started in Maribor or should have been started in Maribor in the last quarter of this year, there are some delays and, and I too am very disappointed that we were unable to start this year, but you know, in construction and designs and all that, these things happen. What I was promised last week by the, the ministry is that everything is done and it's ready for going out to tendering. So hopefully, I want to say hopefully, that by January, we'll have a contractor and ready to go. So I'll be updating the country as it relates to that issue, once we have the facts as it relates to that.
Thank you, Minister, and we have another question. You may proceed.
Head table. I come once again to find out about the bus shed in Bylan by Bylan Schoolyard. A few years now are begging for it. Right? And only drug, they drug in the foot of me. Every time I ask for it, yes, we got to do something. I, the thing about it, Mr. Prime Minister, I'm asking you to get involved with that place. Bylan is a very known area and we have schoolchildren when they come out of there to school and they reach up higher up in the road, we take them, no way to shelter. Even, not only waiting, you know, the sun is a lot. So now they had to wait for, they had to wait for bus, right? They, no way to stay. Right? So I asking once again to do something with this, for Bylan people, please. Please do something with the bus shed. Secondly, they have a bus shed in La Fosse. I hear something about the bus shed like that, somebody put a piece of board there, right? The bus shed serving Bylan's closure, other areas. I spoke about it, right? I was told it's in a different constituency, which I believe that it's in Grenada, in my opinion. Right? So I'm asking to look at the bus shed in La Fosse by, by Melrose. Finally, on the situation, not for long, on the situation with the, 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 the request that made by this America, right?
All right, so...
No, 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 I'm making my, I, I don't care, I'm making it. The question is that the, the U S president always saying he's a man of deal. Right? So he tried to put us in a spot, put him back in us, put America in a spot, not really a spot, but negotiating too. Let us get a place, build a platform so you could drill with Ireland, sell it to the people to build economy. Ask them, no, I, I just making a suggestion, that is my opinion. That's my humble opinion. Right? Ask them, right, to release the pending fresh embargo on Grenada fish and also Grenada get visa free to the U S. Negotiate something too. That's my opinion.
All right, thank you for... Thank you for your comments and your opinion. And we take our next question or comment from the aisle.
Good night and respect to the head table.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am impressed with the Prime Minister report about the road. But I'll humbly submit to him that they are going to do a D F C, meaning a design, finance and construct with maintenance included. I would like to also recommend that we look at the implementation of a way bridge because we realize that most of the road had been constructed. The trailer trucks are the ones that usually destroy the road. So what we have to do to put in place is to implement a way bridge somewhere above the line so that when those big trailer come on the road, we know that if they damage it, they have to pay for it. Other jurisdiction, they are, they, they... Other jurisdiction, they do it, in other jurisdiction they do it. And if we decide to upgrade ourselves and spend all this amount of money to maintain the whole road of Grenada, then we should look at that, so this is my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your suggestion, and we take our next comment or question from my...
Pleasant, pleasant good night to the Prime Minister, Honorable Lennox Andrew, and the ministers in this front row. I want to thank the Prime Minister and my parliamentary representative for helping me to recover from the two birds that I talked about that I had in my pen. Now I have a hundred and twenty-two layers presently now. So in other words, I'm fishing. Presently, I have three hundred and fifty layers, small ones again. So that is three fifty plus one twenty-two, plus six hundred boilers, which I now distribute, sell to real value. So I'm making use of the help that I got from you all on the head table, and I'm doing very good.
Thank you so much.
I will also like to have a little one-on-one with Sister Gloria Thomas at the end of the meeting. And I will also ask again the Prime Minister, if you remember the first Tongal here, I need to have a meeting with the, well, I don't know how to engage the meeting, you have to advise me, with the farmers, the poultry farmers, again. We need to have a meeting with the Prime Minister, I don't want no other minister. The Prime Minister, the Prime Minister and his security, no other minister, and the poultry farmers. That is what I want to happen.
Alright.
And at the end of the meeting, I want to have a one-on-one with the Honorable Andy Williams, please.
Alright, thank you so much, and we will advise how to have that meeting, and then we're gonna wrap up the Tongal with our final two comments or questions. So we take the lady in blue, and I realize the young man would also like to make a contribution, and we close off for this evening.
I haven't got a comment or a question. I have a thank you to the Honorable Prime Minister. And I have two things to tell, especially my PM. When you say River Road is not River Road, I belong to Rivulet Lane, you made a mistake, and I was not pleased about it, so you know I'm going to tell you about it. And no, I'm living in Rivulet Lane, and it did not say Rivulet Lane, I saw it on the post, yes. And to my education officer, Minister Min, you talk all about education, but you did not specify the free lunch in education. You did not. And to the Prime Minister, I'm standing tall at this moment to tell you, on the behalf of my colleagues and on the behalf of the workers, what was unestablished, we are thanking you for your great support, putting us on a pension from the government, not only NS, because a whole lot of my coworkers go home with nothing, only NS. So on the behalf of the cooks in the school feeding program, I thank you very much.
Thank you so much, and I think it's important to be grateful, so we thank you. We thank you for all your comments, we thank you for your constructive criticism, but we also thank you for saying thanks, and I think that's important. Thank you so much, and our final comment, then I will ask the Prime Minister to close us off for this evening.
Good evening. A question to the Prime Minister. A question to the Prime Minister. You mentioned earlier that we're having scarcity of machine operators and construction workers. Through my experience, I've been trying to get machine operator license for a while now, and I was told that in order for you to get a machine operator license, you need to be working with a company that has machines to bring you to get the license. So I would like to know, for young people as my age or younger or older, how would they get the operating license without working for a company? Because sometimes you might be able to want to invest in a machine to do maybe private work. So how would you invest? How would I be able to get my license without going into a company and getting it?
So, sorry, just... The licensing authority, the police?
Can you repeat?
Who indicated to you that you needed to be associated with a company in order to get the license? Or to come to apply for the license?
Most people that I ask, so I ask other machine operators and they told me that, yeah.
Alright, let me, I would need to check this, because this doesn't sound logical or right. And to me, once you have access to a machine, of course, on the day itself, the police will have to examine you, so you'd have to have a machine, and you'd probably have to someone who trained you with it. But to my mind, you don't need to be working with a company that is operating those things to get a license. It's a license for a machine to operate just like anyone else, and to your point, it would make it impossible. Because if you don't have a connection with a business, that should not be a basis for you not getting the opportunity to get the license. I think I also want to make this point, because we've started this before. We have laws and cultures that perhaps come out of an era where everything is seen as punishment or as privilege, when it really is just basic skills that we should be encouraging people to have. So things like driving is a basic skill that we should be encouraging people to have, it's not a privilege. So we had to reverse this culture where we make everything difficult. Getting your driver's license is difficult, moving from one class to the next is difficult. Now, of course, there are safety issues we need to address, but we need to create a culture where we encourage and support people to get skills, like driver's license, like heavy equipment machine license, rather than this kind of prohibitive approach. I think one of the problems is because also it's been in the hands of the police, as opposed to a civilian authority. It is something really, the entire licensing regime should be in a civilian authority with people, that's not policing. Giving licenses to drive vehicles is not police work, and it should really be in the Transport Commission. So those are some of the things we have to work on changing out. But I will verify this, because this doesn't make sense, and if that's the practice, I very much doubt that that's the law. So we can, I will verify this, and I'll ask that we get your contact details, so we can follow up and let you know.
Yes, no problem.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Prime Minister, for your response, and at this time, I'd like to invite any member of the head table, if you'd like to share some final remarks, maybe somebody from St. Andrew? Minister Andrew, you've been chosen.
I've been voluntold, but technician, if you can revert to the presentation that I did, there's a final slide that I want to close with, I think it's very, very appropriate, and I'll choose to close with it right here and right now, the presentation that I did, the very last slide. But in the meantime, while we get the last slide to project and take the message that it says, I want to thank all of you for coming out and so enthusiastically listening and participating in this evening's sharing. It was a very enriching experience to be able to account to you, to share with you the many things that are happening across our ministries and across our constituencies, because we know there's one thing that's going to happen when the boss rings the bell. But anyway, I want to say to you, and Prime Minister, we want to thank you, and we thank all the colleagues for coming, all the colleagues for supporting us, but we want to say to you, in St. Andrew, the candidates in St. Andrew, the MPs, caretakers, all of us who stand as representatives of the National Democratic Congress Government, together we stand stronger, and I want you to say that with us. Together we stand stronger, and that's just not for us, because we have been doing a lot together. We have been going in communities together, we have been walking together, and we know with your support, joining us, together we stand stronger. Have a good night, get home safely, God bless you all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join us for some refreshments. We've kept you long enough, so join us for...